All right, I call this meeting to order at 4:33. We'll acknowledge the meeting's status as in-person, so members of the public may address the board by attending in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. We will not take public comment through the Zoom platform and do not guarantee streaming via Zoom if that platform malfunctions for any reason. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with me at cquinn@petk12.org if you're not able to attend in-person. And now we'll see if anyone from the public has any comment on closed session items. Seeing no public here, I'm going to adjourn us to closed session. All right, thank you all for bearing with our technical difficulties. It's never a dull moment. I'm going to reconvene our meeting at 6:07 PM. Yeah, is it, do one of you have your, oh, it's the phone. All right, yep, that's much better. Thank you, Dave. A round of applause for Dave. Our tech guru and savior. And with that, Trusty Pawn will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And now we will start with school reports. First up, we'll start with CASA, unless it's a joint one again between CASA and Petaluma, then both of you can come up.
Oh, one of CASA's more recent activities that have been going on is Happy Week. That's part of our Hatchery Curriculum. And what that is, is for an entire week, students in the Hatchery Program dress up in really bright elaborate colors. And there's kind of a whole like storyline and premise around it, but basically, the main goal of the week is to teach our students a lot of team building and team bonding activities and strengths.
Next thing that was very frequently was the Butter Eggs Day Parade. And Costa Grande was very adamant in the parade. We had band, wrestling, and robotics as well, I think. And then Petaluma High also attended. We had band, Faze, and the Wildlife Museum.
And then this is probably our most recent event, as this happened about two days ago. We're happy to announce that accumulatively, the two of our schools sent over 100 camp counselors to sixth grade camp this year. So that's a really big accomplishment, and I look forward to going myself next year.
And then another fairly recent was our Senior State Capitol Trip. Over 100 of Casa Grande seniors spent the day in Sacramento touring the Capitol Building and meeting with Assembly Member Damian Conole.
And this is more of an upcoming event, but GQ, also known as Gaucella, is coming up at Casa Grande, and this is our charity event that's almost like a talent show per se, and it's where different groups of students compete, but it's more like friendly competition in the talent show to raise money for their chosen charities.
And then we have Spring Fling coming up May 4th, and we're super excited as well with a Spirit Week. I don't, do I need to go through the days?
No.
Okay. Well, our Spring Fling is, we're really excited for it. We're bringing it back, and we're hoping to have a bunch of bright colors and a bunch of festivities.
Thank you. So next up, so at PHS, we celebrated Women's History Month last month by having notes up in the hallway where you could write a note to a woman on campus that influence you and influences you and inspires you. And then in ASB, we delivered the notes to the students and teachers, and we made a TikTok to advertise it. This is not working. Oh, okay. Next, we had the Every 15 Minutes Program. It was a two-day program focusing on the upperclassmen, and it was a challenge to help us think about drinking, driving, personal safety, responsibility of making good decisions, and the impact it can have on your community. Those are some pictures of the fake car crash that was staged. And then the second day was the assembly and staged funeral. Okay, and then on Friday, we had the Ho-Don Throwdown Dance. This was a prom fundraiser and a tailgate, and we raised $1,800 for the senior class. And then, so between the two schools, 289 students won scholarships at the PEF night. Congratulations to all of them. That's really impressive. And then our JSA chapter attended the Spring State in Oakland. They met students from around Northern California, and one of the students was the official con speaker for a debate about government power to make vaccines mandatory, and they're going to go back in November. And then other events we've had recently is class dodgeball during lunch, to fun like community building activity. Yesterday on Earth Day, we had a campus cleanup. Our band is going to New York City to perform. Our Trojan Broadcast Team went down to Long Beach to go to a conference, and they learned a lot of new fun skills. They also went to San Francisco, and I think they went to the KQED office, which is really cool. And then we had an FFA convention. Those are some pictures from that. So for athletics, PHS currently has swimming, lacrosse, softball, baseball, boys golf, boys tennis, and track and field. And then for CASA, the swimming championships on Thursday and Friday. We also have lacrosse, softball, baseball, boys golf, and boys tennis happening right now. And then, so end of the year coming up, we have Special Olympics, which is for the full inclusion students, AP exams, the senior recognition rally, Mental Health Awareness Month starts in May, and we are partnering with the Safe Team for a drive. And then we also have Super Spring Week coming up, which has Fun Spirit Days and our flag football games, yeah, our senior rally, prom, and then our senior sunset, and finally graduation.
And then for CASA, not nearly as impressive of a list, is the send-off rally, prom, senior sunset, and then of course, graduation.
That's it. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Awesome. Thank you all. It's so nice having you all present together and see what both comprehensive high schools are up to. Next up, we have San Antonio High School, and is Valley Oaks doing the same time or separate? Okay, perfect. So San Antonio.
Hi, my name is Derek Stokely, and I'm a junior at San Antonio High School, and this is my first year attending. Prior to this year, I attended both Casa Grande and Pivatar School. What I appreciate about San Antonio is the ability for students to get themselves back on track, as well as the teachers treat everyone with respect. My plan is to get caught up for this year and return to Casa Grande for my senior year. After graduation, I intend on pursuing a career in the business and the financial world. Currently while out of school, I enjoy singing and dancing. Something I found fun this year, I was being selected to participate as a student panelist on this Youth Truth Student Panel, where we gave input based on our experiences at each of our schools. Here are some things that we've been up to for this year. San Antonio has 81 students currently enrolled, and we've had 14 students graduate so far this year. At the end of each grading period, many students receive awards based on 100% attendance, as well as several levels of honor roll, and the highest being principal's honor roll for earning a 4.0 GPA. Last grading period, we had eight students with 100% attendance and five students with a 4.0 GPA. Gloria Castro was selected as our student of the grading period, and we've also had four students take and pass the SRJC Spanish 1 credit by exam, earning credits for both the JC and the high school. In December, Ms. McGarry worked with a group of students to construct a gingerbread house for the annual competition at the Petaluma Hotel. This year's team decided to build Whoville based on Dr. Seuss's How the Grinch Stole Christmas. They spent a week planning, baking, and decorating their entry before taking it to the hotel. Their entry won second place in the teen category, and this is the six-year San Antonio and the first year, sorry, six-year San Antonio has entered the competition and the first year that they placed. The cardio club ran and walked the mile for the family fun run on December 9th. Several of our students, along with Ms. Grisbeck, Ms. Peterson, and Ms. Volmer participated in the event. Earlier in the spring, San Francisco Shakespeare on Tour, a traveling Shakespeare troupe came to San Antonio for condensed performance of As You Like It for our whole school. The show lasted about an hour, and some of our students were selected to participate in the production. Ms. McGarry and the cooking club spent time after school learning how to make various Super Bowl snacks, including Ari Choke Dip and Chili Cheese Dip. We continue to hold mentor days following each grading period. Besides meeting with mentor teachers for individual credit review, team building, classroom circles, and digital citizenship lessons, last grading period, we ended the day with a rock, paper, scissors tournament. Jackson came out the winner, earning all of the green beads in Lucky Green Derby. Last month, our school participated in a school-wide disaster drill. Staff search teams searched all rooms and buildings, and while doing so, located several well-placed hazards, and many, and some students were, had fake injuries. Fake injuries included a broken arm, a broken leg, and a head injury. Early in March, San Antonio had a six-year WASC review. Three WASC team members comprised a visiting committee. They met with staff, students, and parents, as well as board, tent, and cabinet members. Overall, the report they left for us was very positive, and the accreditation determination will come in May sometime. Two weeks ago, we had our annual Career Health and Wellness Fair on campus. There were 14 different entities presenting as students rotated through classrooms to listen to speakers. Some of their presentations included the Petaluma Safe Team, Petaluma Bounty Farm, the Marines and National Guard, Sonoma County Black Forum, several trades unions, an autobody technician, tattoo artist, and an esthetician. Overall, it was very informative and a worthwhile event. Some of our upcoming events include the Open House and Portfolio Night on May 1st, the Safari West Wide Field Trip on May 17th, the Science Field Trip to Warm Springs Dam on May 30th, and of course, the Graduation Ceremony on June 6th. Thank you, and thank you for continuing to support alternative education.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Y'all have been busy. And next up, Valley Oaks.
Good evening. My name is Paige Papas. I'm a 12-year-old seventh grader, and I've been a Valley Oaks student for around a year now. I decided to enroll at Valley Oaks because for my fifth and sixth grade year, I was homeschooled, and I figured that Valley Oaks would be a good step up for me before heading to Kennelworth. My favorite thing about Valley Oaks would have to be that has a nicely structured schedule, unlike homeschool, where I could just wake up and do work whenever I wanted, or public schools, where you have to wake up around 6:00 AM to get to school. In addition, I'm also a huge introvert, so the smaller and more calm the school is, the better for me. The plans I have for myself in the future are to start studying in chemistry, so hopefully one day I can become a scientist in that field, as is my dream career choice and one of the biggest passions of mine. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for supporting Valley Oaks.
Good evening. My name is Luca Keef. I am 14 and the eighth grade. I've been in the Valley Oaks Virtual Academy for about two months now. The reason why I want to go to Valley Oaks is because I have a medical condition that causes me to blister easily. I've heard about Valley Oaks from my grandpa, and I knew it'd be perfect for me because of my condition. What I like about Valley Oaks is I can choose when I do my work, and has been teaching me to be more consistent. Thanks to Valley Oaks, I've been able to complete more assignments. My plans for the future are to be a truck driver or open-mound skate shop, because even though I can only skateboard for only like 15 or 20 minutes for a couple of days a week, it is my favorite hobby and sport. Good evening, thanks for listening.
Good evening, school board members and administrators. My name is Michael Morgan, and I am an eighth grader who has been attending Valley Oaks for a few months now. The primary reason why I chose Valley Oaks as my school is because of the flexibility and options it offers students. I heard all about Valley Oaks from my mom, who had thought of me when she learned about the school. Valley Oaks has been all that I hoped it would be and more. I've been able to focus more on my personal life. My classes have been tailored more specifically to things I have more interest in, and I'm improving academically. Attending Valley Oaks has truly opened my eyes to what is possible for me. After my time at Valley Oaks, I eventually want to go to law school and become a lawyer, because if there's one thing I have been learning at Valley Oaks, it is have a great ambition for your future. I appreciate all of you giving me the time to share with you my experience. Thank you.
We had a productive back-to-school week. Staff welcomed every returning and new student and their family. We've been preparing for our portfolio open house night on May 7th by supporting students with the creation of their digital, personalized digital portfolio. This year, we are encouraging students to use a website platform other than Google Sites. Ms. Bradley from the district office came to our assemblies to help us with Wakelet, Book Creator, and Adobe Express. Every other month, we have an assembly to help students with their portfolio. We have icebreaker games, and it is a great opportunity to see and talk to other students and build community. Each student is assigned to a staff member, including our secretary, counselor, and principal. Valley Oaks has joined the International Peace Pole Movement. Our new peace pole will be dedicated on May 1st at 11:00 AM, and we cordially invite all of you to please attend.
Two big and exciting changes at Valley Oaks are the addition of Virtual Academy and three new teachers for it. Mr. Wenders, Ms. Songer, Ms. Volmer, and for Valley Oaks, a new principal, Mr. Stevenson, new secretary, Angelina, new counselor, Mr. Babala, and lastly, a new special ed teacher, Ms. DeCacho. They have all recharged and added new energy to our school. 11th and 12th grades continue to be encouraged to get a job and earn elective credit. And that, oh. Sorry. 11th and 12th years continue to be, to be encouraged to get a job and earn elective credit, and the highlights this year are at a farm that breeds and sells pygmy goats and at a local daycare for babies through age four. Additionally, all students are required to do five hours of community service every semester. The biggest draw this year has been to work at Snap Cats in Santa Rosa, which is for special needs and unadoptable cats. There have been eight graduates this year, including two of Virtual Academy seniors. A 15-minute bellring ceremony is offered that celebrates the occasion.
All year, students have been encouraged and challenged to be their best selves. Exceptional efforts of students have been recognized with our 3.5 GPA Semester Honor Roll and our 4.0 Principal's Honor Roll, which both additionally require demonstration of excellent personal character. Likewise, we have been recognizing a student of the month all year. We give gifts and post their photos, or their photo on our wall and website. The winners of the annual science fair were recognized with trophies and certificates. We have been following the new junior high state policy for daily live interaction and social inter, oh. For daily live interaction and social support on Thursdays with Ms. Halsey's history group. Ms. Kestrel has continued to have English groups for ninth through 12th grades. This year, the project topic has been artificial intelligence. Groups of three to four students must communicate and collaborate to produce one group written report and creative product. This year, we have a new high school elective course called Game Analysis. Students play and analyze board games and type reviews. This year, our 21st year of offering wet labs for student courses or for science courses, which provide meaningful social interaction, collaboration, and communication.
Great job, y'all. Thank y'all for sharing your stories and everything you've been up to at Valley Oaks. Moving on, we're going to recognize some students of the month, and we're actually going to start with Kennelworth Junior High School.
Kennelworth Junior High School, student of the month, April 2024. Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to present our April Student of the Month, Emmy Varahona. Emmy has been selected as student of the month by her teachers, who describe her as a motivated student, great team member, and a polite, respectful, and joyous person. Ms. Martin, Emmy's physical education teacher, says Emmy is exceptional in every way. She's organized and prepared for class every day. Emmy is one of the kindest and most helpful students on campus. She is friendly, respectful, and always comes to class with a positive attitude. Her approach to schoolwork and her attitude lifts up those around her. Emmy has maintained high grades throughout both seventh and eighth grade with a 3.89 GPA. Math is Emmy's favorite subject, which she has described as fun. When Emmy is not at school, she is often at gymnastics practice at our local Redwood Empire Gym. Emmy has taken gymnastics for many years, and one of her proudest accomplishments has been scoring first place in every event during a competition. What a talented young woman. Emmy is very family-oriented and shares her favorite hobbies, including playing soccer with her dad, going to the park and playing games with her whole family, enjoying barbecues and being together. Emmy also loves to draw and bake cookies in her downtime. With plans to become a Casa Grande Gaucho next year, Emmy is looking forward to trying out for the high school soccer and cheer teams. Emmy's high school goals include maintaining her high grades and seeing more academic successes. Emmy wants to attend a prestigious college or university and is excited to find out where her true career interests lie. Emmy is truly a wonderful young woman, and everyone at Kennelworth looks forward to seeing all of her future dreams come true. Congratulations, Emmy.
Congratulations, Emmy. Do we have Emmy's friends and family in the audience? If you can please stand, we want to celebrate you too. Wait a little bit. Left and right.
Kennelworth Junior High is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Casey Sheehan. Casey has been selected student of the month by his team, by his team of teachers, because he excels academically, is hardworking, and dedicated and kind. Ms. Martin, Casey's physical education teacher, shared Casey is a reliable, responsible student. He's always prepared for class and helpful to others. I can depend on, I can depend on Casey to make good choices, and he serves as a great role model for other students in class. Casey is kind, friendly, and respectful to adults and students. Academically, Casey has been a true star at Kennelworth, taking the most rigorous courses we offer and maintaining a 4.0 GPA. Casey's favorite subject is math, and he has demonstrated his mastery of this subject in accelerating Math VII and Math I. Casey has also taken advanced English for both of his junior high years and plans to take as many advanced classes courses as possible during his high school career.
Casey is passionate about athletics and plays both North Coast FC Soccer Team and NorCal Oaks Baseball Team. These experiences have been both enjoyable and valuable training, preparing him to try out for both sports at Casa Grande High School. Outside of school, Casey enjoys riding his bike with his friends, being outdoors, and spending time with family. Casey is proud of his academic achievements and is looking forward to continuing a successful pathway through high school. After graduating from Casa Grande, Casey has aspirations of attending a university of his choice and interested in pursuing a career in engineering. Casey, Kennelworth is so proud of you, and we have been honored to have you as a student. Good luck in all that you do. Congratulations, Casey.
Do we have Casey's friends and family in the audience? Can you please stand? All right, we're going to move over to Petaluma High.
All right, so first up, we have Christian, is it Purdio? Okay. So this is what was written about her. Kind, passionate, tenacious. These descriptors hardly scratch the surface when attempting to describe Christian in just one word. Many who were asked insisted that a single term could never do her justice. How could empathy alone capture the depth of emotion she has poured into consoling those in need? Her tears reflecting the pain of the undeserved and her frustration in not being able to do more. To simply say she is talented severely undermines the extraordinary breadth of her artistic abilities. By 17, Christian has learned to play, to play the piano, flute, alto saxophone, guitar, and ukulele through sheer self-taught dedication and passion, all while lending her vocals to her high school's jazz band and to her church as a member of the praise and worship ministry. Christian's compassion goes way beyond any boundaries or limits society tries to put on people. Her tenacity in advocating for the forgotten reveals a drive to uplift those who are cast aside. And her abilities, both with music and her caring nature, come together beautifully to show true compassion. To define this remarkable young woman in just one word would be an injustice. Her intense passion to serve burns too bright to be confined. Christian perfectly represents how awesome and limitless humans can be. It's no surprise that Christian has decided to major in psychology. With her caring spirit, determination, and versatile talents, Christian is going to keep shining bright whether she's analyzing a case study or pouring her heart into a melody. The human mind and soul are just infinitely intriguing words for her to positively impact. Congratulations.
We have Christian's friends and family in the audience. Can you please stand?
All right, and then next up, we have DeeDee Alpert. Okay. In high school, DeeDee Alpert spent her time engaged in many activities, both inside and outside of the classroom. On the tennis court, she has led the Varsity Girls Team as the number one singles player and on the Sonoma County All-League Vival team. In her free time, she coaches tennis lessons for kids and works downtown at Angela's Ice Cream. Throughout high school, DeeDee has also maintained a strong commitment to the language arts. She currently writes for the Argus Courier publication and has gained many volunteer hours from English-language literary workshops with local elementary students. DeeDee has also pursued an interest in international politics and diplomacy, participating in programs at the World Affairs Education Center in San Francisco and interning for the World Affairs Council of Sonoma County. She has also led the Academic World Quest Team here at PHS and even competed in local and national competitions on various topics and current events. DeeDee plans to attend UCLA and major in international affairs in college, hoping to end up in DC one day, and continue to study the infinite details of future global conflicts. Congratulations.
Do we have DeeDee's friends and family here in the audience? Can you please stand?
Now we'll move on to Casa Grande High School.
Unfortunately, neither of our students of the month were able to make it tonight, but we are honored to announce that Jackson Hoffting is one of our April Students of the Month. Jackson is a senior at Casa Grande High School, and he has taken a number of AP and JC courses as well as band. Engineering is what he's going into college and his future career.
And our second student of the month is Kai Radavonghaimi. Kai is personally one of my good friends. I have the opportunity to run track with him every day after school. He is an amazing student and athlete and just a friend overall. But his teacher's also right. Kai is a very involved and outgoing senior at Casa Grande, taking multiple honors, AP and JC classes at the same time, as well as participating in high school varsity sports all four years. Kai is a well-rounded student athlete. Having been in ASB and involved in numerous camp clubs, he also has gained leadership experience and is very engaged with the community. After high school, Kai plans to attend a four-year university in Southern California and study kinesiology or sports medicine. He plans to become a future athletic trainer and receive his graduate degree. Outside of the classroom, Kai loves to go for drives, listen to music, spend time with his family and friends, and watch sunsets. He wants to, he wants to thank his parents for always pushing him to do his best, work hard, and for always supporting him.
Thank you. Congratulations to Jackson and Kai if you're rewatching this video later. Let's move back to Petaluma Junior if we have everybody here. Yes, perfect.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Deirdre Haslam. Deirdre was chosen as Petaluma Junior High's April Student of the Month because she is an excellent member of our school community. Deirdre displays outstanding citizenship, citizenship in addition to being a member of our, wait, sorry, I messed up. An excellent scholar, Ms. O says that Deirdre is creative, hardworking, compassionate, empathetic, and trustworthy. These qualities make Deirdre a joy to have in class. Deirdre excels in math, where Ms. Garvey says that Deirdre is focused, hardworking, and demonstrates a flexible After high school, Kai plans to attend a four-year university in Southern California and study kinesiology or sports medicine. He plans to become a future athletic trainer and receive his graduate degree. Outside of the classroom, Kai loves to go for drives, listen to music, spend time with his family and friends, and watch sunsets. He wants to thank his parents for always pushing him to do his best, work hard, and for always supporting him.
Thank you. Congratulations to Jackson and Kai if you're rewatching this video later. Let's move back to Petaluma Junior if we have everybody here. Yes, perfect.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Deirdre Haslam. Deirdre was chosen as Petaluma Junior High's April Student of the Month because she is an excellent member of our school community. Deirdre displays outstanding citizenship in addition to being a member of our... Wait, sorry, I messed up. An excellent scholar, Ms. O says that Deirdre is creative, hardworking, compassionate, empathetic, and trustworthy. These qualities make Deirdre a joy to have in class. Deirdre excels in math, where Ms. Garvey says that Deirdre is focused, hardworking, and demonstrates a flexible way of thinking. Deirdre is friendly to peers with a wide range of personalities, which makes her a delight to have in class. Deirdre shares that she enjoys her open-minded and helpful teachers at PJHS. Outside of school, Deirdre previously participated in Sea Scouts. Deirdre's current hobbies include creating art and spending time with her friends. Deirdre is excited to join her older brother at Petaluma High School next year. She also hopes to join in on some of the extracurricular activities they offer. In college, Deirdre would like to study animation and design, and she hopes someday to make a movie about her life. Deirdre's family is also very proud of her accomplishments, as well as who she is as a person. Deirdre's mom shared that Deirdre is the most genuine person she knows and that Deirdre stands up for what she believes in. In addition, Deirdre is kind, dedicated, loving, and a fierce friend. Deirdre's family admires her bravery and willingness to try new things. Deirdre has an exclusive spirit and tends to put others before herself. She has a huge heart and a smile to match. Congratulations, Deirdre.
Congratulations, Deirdre. Do we have Deirdre's friends and family here in the audience? Can you please stand?
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Julian Romo Macias. Julian was chosen as Petaluma Junior High's April Student of the Month because he embodies the bantam values in all ways. Julian is brave, authentic, neighborly, trustworthy, accepting, and mindful each day and every day. Ms. Garvey shared that Julian is a personable and friendly. Julian demonstrates excellent leadership qualities and makes an effort to include all of his team members. Julian has combined his intellectual gifts with hard work and thus has made tremendous growth as a scholar at PJHS. Julian makes many people's days with a cheerful "good morning" and a high five every day. Julian says that he enjoys the supportive and welcoming staff at PJHS. Julian enjoys participating in FFA. He is taking Ag Basics elective during ZER period this year. Julian is looking forward to meeting new people and taking engaging elective courses at Petaluma High. Julian plans to attend college and study business or agriculture. He would like to open a cafe or a business in the beef cattle industry. Julian's mom, Ilvia, shared that Julian is an incredibly young man that enjoys helping others. He loves learning new things and applying them to his everyday life. He loves spending time with his family and going camping. His biggest wish when he grows up is to own his own cafe and run it with his family. Congratulations, Julian.
And now we're going to read it in Spanish too. Julian, you can't escape that quickly.
Petaluma Junior High is proud to present our Student of the Month, Julian Romo Macias. Julian was elected Student of the Month at Petaluma Junior High because he has embraced the values of all the senses. Julian is valiant, authentic, amiable, dignified, tolerant, and he does everything he has to do. Ms. Garvey shared that Julian is admirable and friendly. Julian has excellent qualities of leader, and he strives to include all of his members in his team. Julian has combined his two traits with hard work, and he has achieved a tremendous achievement. He has achieved success in PJHS. Julian is happy every day with a lot of people. With a happy day, a high five every day. Julian says he enjoys the support and the welcome of the people at PJHS. Julian likes to participate in the FFA. He is taking the course of basic basic skills during the winter. No, zero this year. Julian expects to meet new people and take interesting, curious courses at Petaluma High. Julian planned to attend the university and study agriculture. He would like to open a cafe or a business in the agricultural sector. The mom of Julian, Eliva, Elidia, shared that Julian is a young, incredible, and he enjoys helping the others. He enjoys learning new things and applying them to his daily life. He enjoys spending time with his family and going camping. His biggest desire when he gets older is to have his own cafe and share it with his family. Felicidades, Julian.
Do we have the family and friends of Julian? Can they say? And now we're moving on to some Students of the Semester from San Antonio.
Good evening, board members, students, and parents. My name is Gustavo Shinzadon, the counselor for San Antonio High School, and I'm here to present our Student of Semester. I will do it both in Spanish and English as well. San Antonio High School is very proud to present our Student of Semester, Cristo Cuevas Calderón. She represents the very best of San Antonio. Cristo came to us in the fall of 2022. From her first grading period with straight A's, Cristo began her rise as a phoenix. In fact, she worked so hard and with such focus that she was able to graduate early, and on March 1st, Cristo achieved her high school diploma. So while at San Antonio, Cristo was always willing to get involved in trying new things. She joined the cooking club during her first semester. She is great at following instructions and enthusiastic about cooking. She worked with her classmates to make smoothies, cookies, and Super Bowl appetizers. She helped make the sauce for the back-to-school night pasta feat two years in a row. Also, both years, she joined our gingerbread team to make a house from scratch for the Petaluma Gingerbread Showcase. Cristo's adventurousness extended beyond school. In the fall, Cristo attended dance classes at a student in Petaluma. She enjoyed telling her friends and teachers about her performances. All the San Antonio staff agree that having Cristo in class was a joy. She always had a positive attitude, and although quiet, often had thoughtful insights to share in class discussions. Cristo is someone who was quick to offer help to her classmates if needed, including her twin brother Christian, who also attends San Antonio. Cristo is truly a San Antonio High School success story. In her time with her San Antonio family, we saw her gain confidence and become a role model. As our Student of Semester, we are certain that she will continue to rise and pursue her future goals. Way to go, Cristo. We are proud of you. I'm hanging there, Cristo. Got one more? With much pride, San Antonio High School presents our Student of the Semester, Cristo Cuevas Calderón. She represents the best of San Antonio. Cristo entered with us in the autumn of 2022, and she obtained a first prize in her first year of qualifications. Cristo started to grow up as a phoenix. She worked so hard and with such intensity that she was able to graduate early. On March 1st, Cristo obtained her second-year diploma. In San Antonio, Cristo was always ready to engage in new activities. She joined the cooking club during the first semester, and she was good at receiving instructions and enthusiastic about cooking. She worked with her classmates to make pancakes, gummies, and soups for the Super Bowl. For two consecutive years, she helped prepare the sauce for the evening meal at the restaurant. At the same time, she joined our kitchen team for making a kitchen from scratch for the Petaluma Gingerbread Showcase. The spirit of adventure extends beyond the school. In the autumn, Cristo attended a ballet class in the studio at Petaluma. She enjoyed talking about her presentations, her friends, and professors. All of the San Antonio students agree that having Cristo in the class was a pleasure. She always had a positive attitude, and even though she was silent, she used her intuitive thoughts to collaborate and discuss the classes. Cristo is the person who offered help immediately to her classmates if they needed, including her brother Gemelo Cristian, who also attends the San Antonio School. Cristo is truly an example of success for San Antonio High School. In her relationship with her family in San Antonio, we have gained her confidence and confidence in a model to follow. As our Student of the Semester, we are confident that she will continue to grow and achieve her future goals. Felicidades, Cristo. We are proud of you. Once again, I present our Student of Semester for San Antonio High School, Cristo Cuevas Calderón.
Congratulations and felicidades. Do we have the family here, Cristo? Congratulations to all our amazing students. Don't flee just yet. We're going to pause in a little bit for photos, but we have some exciting announcements before we do that.
So yeah, so at this point, we're going to do two quick announcements, and then we'd love to get our picture up here and take a break. So I would love to introduce, I would like to invite up Gloria Estavillo. Gloria, could you come on up, please? So we are pleased to announce the selection of Gloria Estavillo as Petaluma City Schools' new Director of Educational Services. Ms. Estavillo will assume her new duties on July 1st, 2024, and we are ecstatic to have her get started. Gloria comes to Petaluma City Schools with 29 years of experience in education. She currently serves as the Director of Educational Services for the Wright Elementary School District in Santa Rosa, where she oversees curriculum and instruction and special education services. Before holding that position, Ms. Estavillo led the College Readiness Program for middle and high school students, adult ESL classes, and the Career Education Program as Director of Education at the Canal Alliance in San Rafael. She has worked in the San Francisco Unified School District as Coordinator of the Secondary School Redesign Initiative and Supervisor of Special Programs for Teacher and Administrator Development. Before serving in these district-level positions, Ms. Estavillo was a principal in San Francisco Unified School District and San Rafael City Schools and was an elementary classroom teacher for nine years. Ms. Estavillo earned her Bachelor of Arts in Literature from the University of California, Santa Cruz, and her administrative credential from the California State University, Long Beach. She also earned her Master's of Education from the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Of her many professional accomplishments, Gloria is especially proud of her leading efforts to support English learners at Wright Elementary School District. This work improved the California Dashboard English Learner Proficiency Indicator from low or very low to high or very high. Her work at the Canal Alliance to launch a new career education program in partnership with the College of Marin helped to significantly increase A-through-G completion rates in their college readiness program. Ms. Estavillo was also named an Honoree by the Marin Women's Political Action Committee, recognized as Marin Women's Commission's Woman of the Month and featured in North Bay Woman Magazine. Ms. Estavillo looks forward to collaborating with a wonderful team of educators at Petaluma City Schools. She hopes to support all students' access to high-quality, engaging educational opportunities. Most importantly, she looks forward to getting to know the Petaluma City Schools' students and families. Gloria has lived in the Bay Area for 25 years and currently lives in Nevada. She is an avid hiker and enjoys gardening, traveling, and spending time with friends and family. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Gloria Estavillo to Petaluma City Schools in her new role as the Director of Educational Services.
Thank you so much. We can't wait for you to get started. You can't start any earlier.
Next, I'd like to invite Whitney Cottrell to come on up, please. I am pleased to announce the assignment of Whitney Cottrell as the new Principal of Kennelworth Junior High School. Whitney will assume her duties on July 1st, 2024. Whitney earned her Bachelor of Arts in History and her Master of Arts in Education from California State University, Sacramento. Ms. Cottrell served at Wood Creek High School for 20 years, teaching world history, AP European history, US history, avid, and leadership. She was also the Department Chair, Professional Learning Community Lead, and Instructional Technology Coach. From there, Whitney served as an Assistant Principal at Rockland High School and, most recently, as Principal at San Ramon Valley High School. Among her many accomplishments, Whitney designed and facilitated an instructional technology professional development program for teachers, presented at Google conferences, and began a one-to-one device program at Rockland High School. She has spearheaded social-emotional wellness programs and implemented equity initiatives to combat bias and discrimination, including the SLAM Student-Led Anti-Racist Movement Program at San Ramon Valley High School. Whitney is originally from the Sacramento area. Her daughter is 25 and lives in San Luis Obispo. Her son is 24 and lives in Santa Barbara. Amazingly, her partner grew up in Petaluma, and he attended Kennelworth Junior High School. Whitney is excited to get to know Kennelworth students, staff, and families. She hopes to strengthen partnerships with families, community organizations, and local businesses, and she is eager to support the holistic development of our students, including their social, emotional, and personal growth. Ms. Cottrell is committed to fostering a positive school culture that prioritizes equity, diversity, and inclusion within the Kennelworth community, and she looks forward to celebrating the achievements and successes of students and staff. Please join me in welcoming Whitney Cottrell as the new Principal at Kennelworth Junior High School.
Congratulations, and we can't wait to have you and your family in Petaluma. With that, I'm going to convene us for a five-minute photo break. All right, we're going to reconvene this meeting at 7:04. And it looks like next up, we have an update about Live Oak. Somebody has an update. Someone has an update for me?
You have. We're going to bring up a quick presentation called Live Oak. Thank you. All right, tonight, we are presenting an update to the Live Thank you. All right, tonight, we are going to, or we're presenting an update to the Live Oak Charter School Prop 39 request. What is a Prop 39 request? In California, a Proposition 39 request is a formal process that allows charter schools to request facilities from their local educational agencies, typically a school district. Prop 39, which was approved by California voters in the year 2000, requires LEAs to provide charter schools with facilities that are reasonably equivalent to those used by other public schools in the district. This includes considerations such as location, quality, and condition of the facilities as long as, excuse me, as well as access to resources like playgrounds and technology. The charter needs to submit an official request to the district by November 1st, which Live Oak did. The district then is required to make a preliminary offer, and the charter school then will do a review and response, and a final offer is generally due to the charter school by April 1st. Both PCS and Live Oak have agreed to an extension until May 8th, because we're still discussing what the facilities can look like for next year. This is a timeline of meetings that PCS Administration and Live Oak have had that really started the conversation through the Prop 39 request. And through this process, started the conversation of what could it look like if Live Oak became a dependent charter school for PCS instead of an independent charter school? One of the last conversations was a site visit by district administration over to Live Oak, where we were able to spend some time with Live Oak Board and Administration and tour the facilities and have a meal together. So now I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Harris for next steps.
Oh, I think the, the process here, this Prop 39 request, right? We've been, Live Oak has been chartered through Petaluma City Schools since its inception, 25? 20, okay, 23 years, who's counting? About 23 years ago. And during that time, so during this Prop 39 request, we were really able to sort of, as Amanda said, sit down, break bread together, talk a little bit about relationships between our district and this independent charter school. It's this nebulous term, right? When you look at the ed code, there really is no distinction between dependent and independent. What we, what we really mean is they manage their own budget, their own staffing. They're really sort of this school that we have this oversight. Every five years, we renew the charter or not. We've always renewed the charter. But there's always been this sort of the separation between the two. And so I'm trying to work on how do we, how do we even come closer together? Because we know that Waldorf education is, there's, there's a lot of demand in our community for Waldorf education. And so to the, to the extent that I think, I believe the number is there, they have a little over half of the students that attend Live Oak live within Petaluma City Schools attendance area. And when we look at their TK numbers as an example for next year, they are full, at maximum capacity and have a waiting list of about 41? Forty-eight, 48 students waiting to get into the, to the program. And so again, attracting students coming from Santa Rosa, Nevada, Old Adobe, even within just the Petaluma community. And so I think there's, that has been the Prop 39. And I think at the same time, and again, so that's the Prop 39 aspect. They're really the, and I'm going to, I'm going to invite some, some friends up here in a minute. Just, I would love to just kind of expand on what I'm saying. But that Prop 39 request has just sort of opened up a lot of these conversations and, and frankly, just brought us closer together as part of having these discussions, ongoing discussions. And frankly, I learned a lot about our, the relationship between Live Oak and Petaluma City Schools historically, what, what it's been and what it could be. I also think that when I look at, you know, our board goal, or sorry, our districts, our second district goal, that we want to ensure that students have lots of broad, diverse opportunities. And I look at the number of students who are flocking to trying to come into a Waldorf education, who are, who are being told, "Sorry, we don't have enough space." And then looking at the facilities where Live Oak is located, and they've been for years over on the fair, at the fairgrounds. And if you've been in to see the facilities, I would, I'll just say less than ideal when I compare it to our, to our district facilities. And so that's the Prop 39 side. So we have to, I think there are two very distinct issues, right? So that's the Prop 39 with Live Oak. And we've kind of come, and at the last board meeting, we talked a little bit about what the offer is. Because the district, you know, under Prop 39, we have to make, we are, we're required to make a comparable offer. What, so a little over half the students that attend Live Oak are within our attendance area. We have a responsibility as the LEA to provide space for our, for those, for those students, students inside our attendance area. We made a good faith offer for, I believe it was four classrooms at Valley Vista. Looking at our campuses, right? Looking at our campuses and where we have potentially could have space, without disrupting the current educational programming that we have going on. Four classrooms at Valley Vista that we could free up, three at Petaluma Junior, just given the enrollment at those two schools. Live Oak is a K-8 school. We have all of our campuses right now that are non-charter. We have K-6 and K-7, 8. So that, that was sort of that process. Parallel to that, we have been for the last about 10 years, we have seen valid, and they're, they're connected now. I'm going to get, get to that point. Valley Vista, over the last approximately 10 years, we've seen a sort of a steady, slow decline in enrollment. We were, you know, close to 400 students about 10 years ago. I think it's 375, nine or 10 years ago. And we're now down to about 180, 190 range. And so a little over half of what we were nine or 10 years ago. And during the course of those nine or 10 years, things have been tried such as the International Baccalaureate, right? We gave that a run for several years at Valley Vista. Talked about becoming an international baccalaureate. It was, it was actually an international baccalaureate candidate school. Several years ago, I think it was right when I first started, the principal and staff came to me at Valley Vista and said, "This is just, this is not what we want. We want to search for something else." And we talked about project-based. We, I know a couple of board members, I know Ellen, maybe it was just Ellen, just Ellen. We went on a field trip with the staff. I've been having meetings with staff. The new principal, Bushman, has been talking with staff about what is it that we're really searching for? Things such as, we've been searching for, and some, you know, you could also say, "It's just a neighborhood. We want to have a neighborhood school. This is great." For years and years, it's run like that. And great. But once you start getting to these lower numbers and you start to have one single classroom per grade level, and then starting to look at the possibility of combining classrooms, we start to say, "Whoa, we need, we really need to figure out what's going on." There are so many, so many reasons. And I would just, just boast for a second. I really believe, you know, Valley Vista is a gem in our school district. And I look at that campus, I think, my gosh, what a dream location and buildings and facilities. Rich diversity at that school, which is something I know personally, I highly cherish in our schools, and it's got it. A strong sense of community, one of the most beautiful gardens that you, you'll ever find in, in Petaluma City Schools. A focus on deep learning across disciplines and the pure joy of what, that comes from being part of that neighborhood school. So anyway, we've been exploring all these things. We've looked at things like project-based learning, STEM, dual-language immersion, would that be a place, global school, expeditionary learning. We've had lots of ideas and none of them have taken hold yet at the school. So at the same time, this is why I'm bringing it up as part of this Live Oak update, I started to think, well, we have a lot of demand here, this, this Waldorf. Could that be a fit for Valley Vista? And so I just wrote something to the Valley Vista community about the growing demand for Waldorf. And I invited the Valley Vista community out. I think Cabinet were planning to be there and will have some representatives from Live Oak as well on May 9th, 5 o'clock at Valley Vista, to just have a conversation and broach the subject about, could this be a potential partnership? I see some, a lot of similarities. I mean, I think when, when, when we think from my conversations with the folks in Waldorf, and I wish Jason, Jason speaks really eloquently about this because he has personal experience. But when I talked to the folks there, some of the Waldorf principals centered on a commitment to developing the whole child, head, heart, and hands with intentionality in every interaction, some of the things that I saw while I was there. Waldorf education emphasizes outdoor learning, utilizing gardens and nature as educational tools, low-tech, hands-on experiences, learning maps similar to grade-level units, and frankly, project-based learning and service learning. Many of the things that are already happening, happening at Valley Vista are there differences? Absolutely. So part of that, the idea there is to let's share, let's talk about this as a community and see, is this something that many in the Valley Vista community would, would, would want to do and partner with, with this group? And so I've invited several of our partners from Live Oak here this, this evening, just to sort of, I'd love just to share their, their, anything that they want to share about the Prop 39 request, the Prop 39 process, but then also just kind of coming together and what that partnership could look like from, from their perspective. So I'd love to have Jessica and whoever you want to bring up here, please.
Hi, everybody. You all know who I am, and I don't think you've had a chance to meet our new director this year. This is Lynda Delgado, who has joined us as our executive director and is fabulous. And she comes to us, we're so lucky in this moment to have her with us because she comes to us with decades of experience with charter schools and doing charter school oversight for a large district in the East Bay. So she's well-versed in all things charter schools from both the school side and the district side. So it's really fabulous to have her in these conversations. As Matthew said, we initiated a Prop 39 request last fall as part of our decades-long search to find facilities that were adequate, suitable, not falling down around our ears. We have been at the fairgrounds for 20-ish of our 23 years. And in that time, those buildings were old when we moved in, and they've not gotten any younger or any better. So we have been engaged in a long, deep process of looking for where could our home be? And we have a solution potentially figured out with the city at the fairgrounds, but it involves construction, which is expensive and chaotic. And, and it would be, it would not happen in complete fruition until after we'd still have to be parked in these terrible buildings for another, you know, five or more years. So we decided to initiate the Prop 39 process with the district because the district has responsibilities for its in-district students, even though they're out of charter school. And we thought it's, it's really good for our relationship with the district to just get around a table and start having conversations, to try to do some relationship repair. The less sad about our historic relationship with the district, the better probably. And also to try to find a solution for building some possibilities for what Live Oak could, could find for our homes in the town. What we, we also went out of town in full honesty. We, we have talked to other districts about having us, and they've wanted us because we bring out-of-district students. But we are really committed to being a Petaluma public school. And if at all possible, that's what we want to, we want to serve the students and families of Petaluma. So we're trying to find a way to make that happen here in town. That opened the door to getting around a table with Matthew and with Amanda and really talking honestly and openly about what does Live Oak needs? What does Live Oak brings to the community and to the students here in town? And what does the district need? You also have needs that are not met. You have a school that is under-enrolled, although that was not the starting point for the conversation at all. But, you know, in trying to be a good partner with the district, we asked, "What do you, what do you need? What are, where are your opportunities and how can we be good partners together?" And, you know, amazing things happen. Once you get around a table and you start having positive conversations and being honest and transparent with each other. And I think you all know Matthew at this point is a, a guy with a vision. And Amanda has brought a lot of really fresh energy to the table, and it's, it's just been a really lovely experience. The opportunity to partner and collaborate with Valley Vista is, feels hot off the presses. And, you know, we're in the early conversations, but excited to, to be talking with the district about that. Do you want to say something?
I'll second everything she said.
Please, and this is Kristin Walter, our other board member.
Yeah. No, Vice Chair. Yeah, just as a public Waldorf school, we're incredibly committed to public education. That's why we all do what we do. That's why the teachers choose public school instead of a private school. The idea of being responsive to children in these times is something that really is, is just a fire burning inside of us. And so we have long wanted to be a part of a more institutional, sustainable solution to public education and have often felt like, well, we could have an ecosystem of education here in Petaluma. And we're really hearing, oh, that's the vision that PCS has. So we feel really confident that we'd be a huge asset in achieving that vision. So anyway, our commitment to public education is deep.
So I just want to, want to close by just kind of where we're at right now in the process. So the Prop 39 request was made for the first time ever for multiple reasons. And the, our offer was four classrooms at Valley Vista, three at Petaluma Junior. What that would mean is it would break up, like, you know, Live Oak would have some classrooms probably at the fairgrounds, some at Valley Vista, some at Petaluma Junior. And I understand it's very less, less than ideal. And we also have to, from our, from our perspective, we're maintaining our programming because we have schools there. When you have a side-by-side, two schools on the same site, it's because it's very challenging from the office staff to pick up and, I mean, sharing the facilities, all sorts of different things. And so the idea just sort of came up as far as what does the space look like? And to be hyper-clear, no decisions have been made. We're not, we haven't agreed to anything. The only, what we've agreed to is let's go and meet out with the Valley Vista community. So that was literally, I think it was yesterday that I sent something out. And we want to hear from, you know, Valley Vista families. I know that there, I was talking with Jessica, and they have some families from Valley Vista who went to, or are at Live Oak right now. And so the, the idea really is, is this something, is this an idea that we could sort of, you know, two communities that would, that could come together and could mesh together and create something really special on that campus? So that's, that's where we're at right now with that Live Oak update. Thank you guys for being here.
Just to be thinking about it, just hearing this, I have had a conversation with a Valley Vista parent. So, and I really like this idea. I've been, I've thought about it for a long time. But I also am really concerned about Valley Vista. And so I want to know whether you intend on it still to be a charter, whether you'll keep the Live Oak name, whether it's still going to be a K through 8, and if you still have credentialed Waldorf teachers. All of those things define you. And so moving in with Valley Vista, I really want to make sure that Valley Vista teachers and families who have built a community there and have stuck around for a long time and feel very identified with that school, I want to make sure that they, they're going to be less, you know? And so I want to make sure that they're valued and that they're not kind of subsumed in the Waldorf. I mean, I, not Waldorf, but just in your identity. And, and I think it's going to be an interesting work ahead. I really want to see Valley Vista become, you know, your vision and our vision. But I just want to make sure that those things, because there could be some, certainly for me, some.
Those are all great questions, Maddie. And I think that, again, we're, it's such early stages right now. Yeah, and I think I, I agree. I mean, Valley Vista is a special, is a special place. And I want to see it, you know, thinking about over the last 10 years, going from 400 down to 180. Like, at some point, we have to, and I've, I've been out to talk with the staff multiple times. And so the staff, we've had a lot of candid conversations about what this would look like and the transition and different things. And there are, I don't want to speak for the staff because I know everyone has, has different opinions. But it was no one, I said, no one stood up and threw their cellphone down and walked out of the room. Same thing at Live Oak. We went and met, went and met with the staff there. And I think everyone, but maybe one or two had thumbs up, like, yeah, we want to continue this conversation and see what this would look like. I think one of the challenges is when you start to, when you bring two communities like this together, there are certain things, and I said, let's talk about what are your non-negotiables, what are our non-negotiables? What could this look like? And I've talked with both staffs about that. One of the things you have to be mindful of when you're creating, you know, a school and a vision, you have to, if you're, if it becomes too cloudy of what are, what are we actually doing here? There's too many moving parts. If we want to really create a model, like a model Waldorf program, what is that, what would that look like? And as far as the credentialing, like, absolutely, we want, we would want to keep as many Valley Vista teachers there as possible. So it's got to be, it's got to be a positive for both communities. It's not just, it's got, it's got to be a melding of two, not one taking over, what it's, yeah. So, thank you.
Sure. I think that we have, you know, this, the pace of this has been, like, hot off the presses, no exaggeration. And, you know, equal to our commitment to, you know, the sustainability and thriving of our school is the Valley Vista community. We're a very relationship-oriented school. And, you know, I don't think we know exactly how we're going to get there, but we really value relationships and being in conversation. And I think when you, when you deeply are listening to each other, you can create something. So we're kind of putting a lot of faith into the process of being in relationship with Valley Vista and are grateful for the May 9th board meeting. And also, we haven't been at the, like, this conversation of being a dependent charter or relocating, it hasn't even, it wasn't even vocalized, right? Until, I don't know, like, four weeks ago. So it's not like we've been at the table for very long at all. The Prop 39 process did start in November, but, you know, I think you said when we got into the room, we were, you know, we had our guard up. What was your word? We were scared of each other. Let's just put it that way. So I just think that's important, right? Because it can sound like this has been a long conversation, and we've been at the table for a long time. But, you know, we haven't really been at the table for that long. So there's a lot of room at the table, yeah.
I would say with our first meeting, I believe it was an introduction meeting for Live Oak to meet me and for us to meet Linda. And it came up and it was, "Over Our Dead Bodies" was my first introduction.
I think one thing that I always think about with charters, dependent, independent, anything, making sure that the neighborhood families are the top priority in terms of enrollment. And I think that's, I think we've managed to prioritize that at every other charter school, so I don't foresee it being a problem. I just want to vocalize that. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? We definitely look forward to hearing back how that upcoming visit goes. Keep us posted, yeah. Thank you all. And now moving on to a parcel tax update.
All right, we received official notice from both Sonoma and Marin counties that Measure E, our elementary parcel tax, passed with 68.5% voter approval. And we received, yay! We also received notice from both Marin and Sonoma counties that Measure B, our high school parcel tax, did not pass. We had an approval rate of 63.5%.
Thank you to the voters in 1978 for setting up this wonderful process where democracy gets ruined. Thank you so much for that. But thank you seriously to all the voters in Petaluma and the surrounding area who voted for both measures. Became real close, not quite close enough, but we will persevere and figure it out and get excited to figure out how to implement Measure E while we get ideas on how to help our secondary schools out.
Yes, and I think the takeaway for me, the positive takeaway, is that the vast majority of Petalumans voted for these measures, even in an election, even in an election where there was very historic low turnout. And 60, even 63.5%, that's a majority in my, in my world. So it's, there's, there's a positive feeling out there. And frankly, you know, Measure, Measure B, part of the challenge, right? You have so many districts in town, and you see Petalma City Schools, and maybe you're, you know, have elementary students in Waar and Old Adobe, and you're wondering, wait, why, why is this on my? Because we're all, secondary, we're all part of Petalma City Schools. I think in light of some of the things that we've, in the news the week before spring break, one of the most challenging weeks in my career. You know, I think it's, it's a real, it would have been a really huge win to see Measure B pass because one of the things that we keep hearing over and over is we need more trusted adults on campus. We need more for, you know, thinking about student safety, thinking about those relationships. And so I'm very grateful to all the voters who turned out, and I, and I hope that there's another opportunity for us to, to bring something like that to, to the voters because I do think that our schools are amazing places for learning. And when I go out to staff meetings and talk with staff, some of the heartache that I feel is, Matthew, we need more, we need some more adults on campus. And it's like, yeah, I, that's what we were trying to, and, you know, I think Measure E for our elementaries are going to have, there's, they're going to, they're going to get a chance to see that. And I want our secondary schools to have that same, same opportunity. So more to, more to come on that.
Great. Any questions on, moving on to academic support and enrichment programs, the RFP presentation on?
All right, we will just pull up this presentation. After this one, you do get a short break while Tony presents before I come back. All right, as it was previously discussed, PCS has put out an RFP for Academic Support and Enrichment Program. So this is just a quick presentation of the process that we are following and the timeline of our goals. Petaluma City Schools is requesting statement of qualifications and proposals from experienced and qualified organizations to serve as the before, after, and summer school academic and enrichment program provider to operate, operator to our elementary schools, including during the school year, non-school days, intercession, and summer session. PCS delivers a high-quality, diverse, equitable, and inclusive education to all students, scholars, so they can creatively explore interests, collaboratively solve problems, and fully develop as resilient, caring, responsible members of our community. Our mission expands beyond the regular school day and includes before and after-school times as well as non-school days. PCS would like to contract with one organization to provide and operate before-school, after-school, non-school day, intercession, and summer programs in deep collaboration with the district. The program will be supported by and utilized multiple funding streams, including but not limited to after-school education and safety, known as ACES, in accordance with EdCode Sections 8482 through 8484.65, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, which we often call ELOP, and funds a portion to the district in accordance with EdCode Section 46120, childcare vouchers, and family fees. The timeline is, is on April 17th, we issued the RFP. We sent it out to our current providers, and it is posted on the homepage of our district website. The deadline to submit questions is tomorrow, April 24th. The deadline for responses is Friday, May 3rd. We will have interviews and presentations scheduled with a committee. Then our goal is to bring to the May 14th board meeting a recommendation for board approval. We will be having a review committee, which is going to be made up of 11 members. That includes a member from each of our seven elementary schools. We will have three principals. So we will make sure to select one principal who currently has Champions as a provider, one who has YMCA, and one who has Boys and Girls Club. And then Mr. Hua, our Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, will be our district administrator on the panel, and I will act as the facilitator.
So can I just, I just want to add something real quick to this. So this process, as many of you know, is that we had a process, we had a process, and we ended up stopping that process. Part of it was, and I think the reason that we ended up, so we need to restart this because it didn't feel super transparent to me. And as a, as a parent in the district at two different schools and superintendent, when I asked about the committee and said, oh, there's already a committee going, so wait, I didn't even, we, we, we need to do a better job of being really transparent about this, bringing it to a board meeting, making sure that we're really communicating to all the school sites about what's happening. No matter what decision we make, there's going to be, there's going to be some schools where they say, there's going to be pushback and hurt. There's, there's, we know that not everyone's going to be happy about the decision, but we have, but the idea here is using this, this new resource, these new resources of ELOP funding. For, I think there are two really core things in my mind. The first one is, is an equity issue. And what I mean by that is, if you have, let's say you have a family, I'm going to use, I'm not picking on these schools, I'm just going to use them as a total example, hypotheticals. You have a family who goes to McNear, they sign up at McNear, they say, we love McNear, we can't wait to start here. And the family is all registered, excited, and then they, they find out that, oh, but by, by the way, we need before-school and after-school care for two children. And then they tell them, great, sign up, here you go. It's $1,400 a month for after-school care. Again, hypothetical, hypothetical, right? But these are, you know, these things happen. And then a family might say, well, we, that's, no, we can't do that. And or maybe doesn't want to advocate and say, is there a reduced rate? And they should say, well, if we go over to McDowell, it's free. Or if we go to this school, it's way reduced price. So there's, we, we've set up systems at different schools, for whatever reason, like, here we are, right? We have ACES funding at some schools, and there's all sorts of different reasons why this is, why it is where we're at right now. But the fact that a family would say, I can't go to this school that I really want to go to because the childcare costs are just outrageous. The idea from an equity perspective is, how do we make sure that students who qualify for ELOP have free before and after-school care at any PCS school that they go to? And number two, if they're within a certain income bracket, we, we have sort of like tiered rates that we can set and say, doesn't matter what school you go to, this would be the same cost at Grant as it would be at Cherry Valley. It's the same cost at Pen Grove as it is at McDowell for the family based on their, their income. That's, that is the overall message that we're saying. We're done playing these different games and moving families from one school to another because they can't pay for before care and, before, before care and after-school care. That's, that is creating inequities in our system, and then frankly, it's creating schools, the demographic, shifting demographics in our schools that is the opposite of what we're trying, what, what we're trying to do is create diverse places for learning. So that's the number one thing in my mind about why we're doing this. Number two is quality of before and after-school care. We now have a coordinator of ELOP. And part of this, the idea here is, we want to, I use the word standardized, but we want to set a, set a high expectations for what we expect for our, for our before-school and our after-school providers. From, everything from the nutrition that is provided to the academic, academics, to the, the enrichment opportunities that are afforded to our students, things like Marimba, coding robotics, offering these things so that all students get to share in this wealth of things that happen in the after-school program. And I'm not talking about schools, school-funded or things that happen, you know, after-school enrichment things. I'm talking purely from our after-school provider, whether it be Champions, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, depending on who applies for us. I have no, I don't really, it doesn't matter to me which one we go with. I want to go with the highest quality and the one that's going to provide a quality, a price for families, so it doesn't matter which school they go to. That's the bottom line for this process and kind of putting into perspective of the why. So with that, if you guys have questions.
First, thank you for identifying that issue. I mean, I think we've, over the years, we've talked about these multiple providers at different sites, and we hadn't just, wouldn't have just put it together to ask ourselves these questions. So thank you for observing it and then acting on it. I wanted to ask Amanda on the RFP, I didn't notice anything on there about number of school sites, number of families served. Are we asking for something, you know, to give us a rate that we scale to what the need is? Or do they know how many sites that we're talking about?
So in this, in the statement, it does say our seven elementary school sites, they're not listed out, though. And in the process, through the conversations, they are aware, excuse me, that we are looking for tiered rates. Both organelles, yeah.
I have a question about the funding. I believe JJ last year said it's 1.7 million per year, but then is there an expiration on those funds?
It's ongoing funding each year, annual.
Yeah, it is ongoing. The, we did have quite a two years of carryover that we have been spending down. So the expectation is that the amount per student will fluctuate each year. We won't know next year's rate until the governor's budget is approved.
But this is, because I believe before they were talking about it as like a block grant, but this is not a grant? Or is it like one of those non-competitive grants that you just get every year?
So this is this piece of it. So we have been lucky enough in California to receive ELOP and ELO. Well, yeah, the original, it was ELOP. When they came out with the new ELOP, they renamed it ELOG. So the original was a one-time block grant. This is ongoing funding, which is part of our principal apportionment each year. But if you do, you will, if you do not use it, and it's very restricted, you do have to return it.
And the providers know that we're, part of their, part of the bid is tiered rates. Like I said, anyone who qualifies for, for ELOP funding, so it will be free. Then there's another rate, and then there's sort of like the full, full boat fare, right? What it would cost. Everyone receives a discount. I think the other important thing that we added in there that I wanted to make sure was in there was that our, our teachers and staff receive a significant discount. If they have children in our district and want to utilize the before and after-school care, that our teachers and staff receive a significant discount.
Great. Any questions? All right, thank you. Moving on, we'll have a presentation about our categorical programs.
Okay, categorical programs. The state and federal government allocates various funds to qualifying schools and districts for categorical programs and services, with the primary focus of supporting academic achievement of students, especially students performing below grade level or are still learning English. Category program allowable expenses vary. It's all dependent on need, but everything from staff to instructional materials to professional development. And all of it really to ensure that students are college and career and life-ready, and they can be successful in that. And here's a list of state and federal programs that, yeah. It isn't, I don't think it's everything, but it's most things that we oversee, monitor, ensure that it's, the reporting is done, and, and all the plans are in place so that it can be spent according to how it was intended. I don't, I don't. I don't, I don't plan to talk about every single one of them, but I do want to focus on our title, our title funds. And I know that my next presentation is on the CSI update, so I'll kind of segue into that. So our title programs, we receive titles one, two, three, and four funds every year. And these are federal programs to support specific groups of students. The funds are restricted, and they're distributed to us through the consolidated applications that we apply for every year and that the board approves, usually around August, September. And the conex is just a vehicle to how the CDE distributes the funds, but also helps monitor if, if we're using the funds as it's intended. Title one funds is the largest federally funded program. It is supplemental, so it cannot supplant the already resources at the sites. Its eligibility is based on students who, who meet the poverty level. And again, it's intended to support student achievement by ensuring that all students have a fair, equal, and significant opportunities at the schools that receive title one funds. So these are the schools that are, that receive title one funds. McDowell, San Antonio High School, Carpe Diem, Sonoma Mountain, Valley Vista, McKinley Elementary, Kenilworth, South County Consortium, and Casa Grande. Next year will, will be school-wide title one school. Title one schools, you know, are, the, the funds have to be approved by their school site council. The, the school site council's main responsibility is to develop their SIPSA and how those funds will be used through needs assessment. And then, and before it can actually be spent, it needs to be approved by the board. And every school that receives title one funds must also have a parent and family engagement policy, which is a way to help engage the, the community with the, the process of what the needs are and how those funds should be spent.
Sorry, Tony, I may have misheard you. Did you say that the district is qualifying for title one next?
No, the, the Casa Grande High School will be title one, school-wide title one next year. We receive title two funds, and that's funds that typically go towards professional development, helping new teachers with their BTA, and, and coaching for administrators or opportunities to the AXA platform. Title three is funds that we receive mainly to help students become English proficient, as well as help them meet academic standards, that may be grade level standards. Those things help fund things like newcomer materials, software programs, like Rosetta Stone, or things that can help students learn, learn the language, reading intervention materials, as well as also professional development. And title four is really around improving school conditions, ensuring students have a well-rounded education, technology proficiency, digital literacy for students. So this is our federal entitlement that we received for 2022, 2023, 2024. Where, since we're two districts, we receive two separate funds, which can be challenging when we have to do reportings and things like that. So every, every year we apply and, and based on how they allocate the funds, so we receive funds for us to spend according to the, the restrictions that are applied to each, each entitlement. So with that, another funds that we receive that are under state and federal is our comprehensive support and improvement. And these are, so SA requires every state education agency to identify schools that are eligible for comprehensive support and improvement or CSI. And schools that are eligible for CSI receive funds to help address the challenges that they are facing. And there's various different criterias that would qualify them for CSI. Currently, San Antonio High School qualifies or remains under CSI eligibility for low graduation rates, and that's 68% graduation rate or below over several years. And they've been in, in CSI eligibility for a number of years, even before I started here. And South County Consortium is eligible this year for low-performing suspensions and absenteeism, and that's based on the 2023 dashboard, receiving all reds, actually, all reds in low-performing math and English suspensions, and I think they were orange in absenteeism, which qualifies them for, for these funds. So both sites receive funds to help, hopefully, help them exit out of CSI and, and students become, or start achieving at their, at those, those sites' graduation goes up and, and the performance goes up for the students. They're expected to receive about $164,000 to help develop root cause analysis and, and evidence-based strategies at the sites. And part of that is also requirements of the community come together and, and developing a plan and, and going through that, that community process. So really, when we look at all of our categorical programs, they are highly audited and they are highly restricted. There's specific requirements that continuously need to be monitored, because if the funds aren't spent correctly, the students suffer. And if the spends aren't, if the funds aren't spent, the students suffer, and we end up having to give money back, and it becomes another issue. So, you know, these are things that we really want to be careful with, and things that we really want to make sure we're using appropriately and, and ensuring that they can benefit the students. Last year, we were audited for our secondary. FPM came and, and you may remember, I spent most of the fall really working on, with our team, to, to truly address all of the issues that the FPM team came and looked at. And it was a, you know, it was a district-wide, the whole cabinet and, and district folks really, really helped address the FPM findings. But we cleared all those findings and, and we, and there was nothing for us to, if anything was, we celebrated in the fact that we didn't have any findings that carried over that would become an issue for us, and we were able to clear up any concerns that they had. Next year, we'll have another FPM review for elementary. And so we're waiting to get more details about exactly what they will be looking for, and we'll begin the whole process again, putting a team together to go through the whole audit, which is definitely, you know, time-consuming, and it does take us away from our daily responsibilities. But at the same time, it also helps educate us and ensuring that we are doing what we should be doing, and, and making sure that we are serving our students correctly, and using the funds appropriately, and being in compliance with the law. So next steps, you know, in the coming summer, I'll be bringing forward our, our title programs for approval to the board. We'll be looking at developing root cause analysis for the CSI schools. And we're hoping to build support with additional staffing to help oversee the implementation of our categorical programs, because they are vast and they are required to, require a lot of detail and monitoring, and specifically, specifically around our title one, our title programs and our CSI programs. So with that, thank you, and if there's any questions?
I have a question. Oh my God, just the, so many hoops to jump through to apply for grants and respond to grants. And I see in the nonprofit world, too, like they're just creating bureaucracy and admin jobs. And, I mean, I get it, you can't just give people money and let them do whatever, but like, at the same time, can you just give us money and let us do whatever? And hold, hold us accountable, but like, all this reporting. So I saw that title four really only ends up being about $36,000. How much, how much do we end up paying in staff salary, staff time, if we're talking about adding staff? What, what percentage of these title monies are gonna end up just paying a, a district staff salary? I don't expect you to know that off the top of the head, but.
Yeah, I would imagine it'd be multi-funded, probably multi-funded through multiple, multiple categorical funds, so that it's not concentrated in any one particular fund.
Like, it won't be one full-time person just to look over the title ones and.
Well, it could be, but that person might be multi-funded, because they'll look over all of the categorical programs, for example.
Right, okay.
Maybe a significant part of it could be out of supplemental. I know in the past, we've had to give back supplemental dollars, and there's been significant carryover as well, because if they're not spent, they end up being carried over. And if they're over 15%, it becomes an issue. So, you know, those kinds of things are, can happen when there's not enough hands or eyes watching to, to make sure that these things are, you know, being spent appropriately. And, and to emphasize, you know, the worst thing that we can do is not spend the dollars, because they're meant for the students, and they're meant to benefit the students, and of course, spend it inappropriately. If we're rushing to figure out how do we spend the, the dollars that we didn't spend, we make, you know, sometimes bad decisions about where we spend those dollars. So I know those things are things that we definitely want to try to avoid. So, so exactly, you know, how many people or what that looks like? You know, I think that's probably a conversation we'll have. But, but it's something that I feel, based on all of the categorical problems we have and the reviews that we'll be facing next year, it just may be something that worthwhile to explore.
Yeah, thank you.
So I know previously we had CSI money for San Antonio. What came out of that root cause analysis that we can potentially apply to now or maybe not do?
Yeah, so San Antonio's graduation, and I think the biggest issue that, that I've seen is really the systems that are in place there. Kids are, you know, transferred, there, there isn't, doesn't seem to be a clear process of how students are being transferred from back to San Antonio, or if they travel back to the comprehensive sites, exactly what those needs might be. Some students may be transferred with so low of credits that there's, even if they complete San Antonio, they don't have enough time to actually complete all of their credits. So a lot of the, the, I guess, areas that we want to look at is also, what do we need to do at the comprehensive sites to ensure that students are not falling too far behind that, that when they end up going to San Antonio, that they are too far behind to even catch up there? Because it's a very, San Antonio is, can be very transient, students that come and go depending on the credits, and also, you know, that they may have other challenges that aren't being addressed as well. So, and their population changes depending on, you know, the, the semester or the quarter. I also think that they, they run off a different system of this, the, I think they run on a quarter system where they accelerate a little bit, but they also do varying credits depending on grades and, and other factors, so that I think that doesn't create continuity between the comprehensive sites. So, so I think it's mainly a big systematic issue that needs to be addressed.
Because I was just looking at the dashboard and saw that the graduation rate is 51%. The year before that, it was 60%. But then we're, we just saw, you know, some students from Alt Ed that were here from San Antonio. One of them graduated last month, she graduated early, and a bunch of students, I forgot how many they said, took the Spanish credit by exam test at the junior college. Now they have college credits and high school credits. So has, and I know it's come up before about making more of the classes more rigorous and A through G eligible. And so I'm just wondering if part of this is fostering like that college and career readiness that we know like helps retain students and helps them graduate? Because it, I don't, I don't know, I'm just, I don't even know what to say. Like 51% of the kids, and there's like 85 kids at the school.
Yeah, I think since maybe 2019 or so, it's been under CSI, so.
So like Caitlin was saying, it's like, we're getting money for the sake of getting money. It feels like if we're not seeing any movement, so I'm just hoping that we do not do the same things, whatever we did before with the CSI money, we do not do again, because that did not work. Or we can look at the root cause again, but let's make actual practical changes. And when we face resistance, just keep moving forward, because we cannot continue to have 50% of kids at a school of 85 kids not graduating. I'm just like, really frustrated.
Right, especially when it's our most Latino school, and the kids from comprehensives get sent there for reasons we don't always know.
And we know that they can do, we've heard people say like, they can't do, we know they can, this girl graduated early.
They're literally doing accelerated stuff for credit recovery, yeah. Well said, thank you.
Tony, this has been super educational, thank you. I've learned something, that's great. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about these title funds, particularly title one, since that's the biggest pot of money, and you know, we're, we've thrown around that term so much, and I know it's associated with SES. But what are the prescriptions of what we can spend that on? You know, can we go, is it just curricular, or can we go co-curricular and extracurricular, or what?
Yeah, so it's meant to go, it's meant to be above and beyond what they will get all students supplemental. And the, you know, things like food is not allowable, you can't spend money on, you know, food, but.
Really?
Now, if you have a parent meeting, you could spend a little bit of title one dollars to provide refreshments.
But not nutrition, not school nutrition, no?
No, I think there's separate funds for that, yeah. But whatever the, whatever the, the, I guess, expenses are for title one, the, the most important piece that it goes through a process, and that process is they do a root cause analysis, they determine the need, and based on that need, the, the school site council and the community gets together and say, well, what, what, how do we meet this need based on the dollars that we have? And then make sure that they're not supplanting, that they go above and beyond. So it could be everything from additional staff. It could be, you know, computers, it could be intervention programs, it could be tutoring, whatever that is above and beyond that there are providing all students. And if they're school-wide, it, it creates an opportunity to, to provide the services to all students, even if they're not technically qualified under title one. But the majority of the schools, they benefit from, from those programs. As opposed to targeted, where they have to then target specifically the students who qualify, which is very difficult to even identify sometimes.
Right. Okay, you answered my other question. Because one, and title one and three, they follow counts of individuals. But what I'm hearing from you is, if, if though, if those benefits that are targeting that population have spillover, that's okay.
Correct, so if, schools have to, I think, meet a threshold of about 35, 40% students who qualify for, for them to be school-wide, if they choose to be. They can still choose to be targeted, I'm sorry?
It's that low percentage?
And so which of our schools meet that threshold?
All of them.
All of them?
All the ones that are, that I listed there meet the, yeah, will meet school-wide, yeah, yep. And Casa Grande, I was, I think, over 46%, but they never were title one schools. But this year, they will be working with their SIPSA to, to put down as a school-wide so that they can receive title one dollars.
As Tony shared, I mean, things like supplemental curriculum, bilingual resource teachers, instructional assistants, bilingual instructional assistants. The PK program is a perfect example of ways that, you know, how do you re-engage parents? How do you really support the students who are, who meet the criteria? There are many ways to do it, but those are just some examples of how some of our schools use their, their title one funds.
Any last questions or comments on categorical programs, including CSI? All right, thank you. One more presentation, y'all, and then we'll do public comments, and then we'll have another short break. Let's hear about the financial audit report on Measure E and C, the bonds. All right, tonight, we bring forward to, for your viewing pleasure, our audits that were submitted to the state on April 8th. If you remember at our last board meeting, our audit firm requested an extension in order to submit those funds. So this is not for approval, they have been submitted to the state. We have attached our year-end audit and then our bond audit. One of the things I wanted to point out on the audit that these are our funds, all of our funds as a whole. So when you read our audit, it looks very different than what we present at budget and interims, where we break it up by fund balance. Some of the highlights from the fiscal year 23-year-end audit were that the district's financial status increased overall as a result of last year's operations. Net position of governmental activities increased by $15.2 million, 68%. Our expenses were roughly $123 million, and our revenues were roughly $138 million. We acquired over $11 million. We acquired over 11 million dollars in new capital assets, um, in last fiscal year, mostly due to our ongoing construction projects. Excuse me, reserves for our general fund decreased by just under 1 million dollars. So we ended the year with 10.3% in unrestricted reserves. Nothing really to note on the bond audit other than you can see where we sold elementary bonds for 5 million dollars and secondary bonds for 25 million dollars, which increased our overall balance, of revenue in last fiscal year and gave us a healthy start, um, for our projects in this year. At the end of the fiscal year and audit, you can see our findings. I just wanted, um, to highlight that we, there was a finding in child nutrition. There were six months out of the 10 months that, um, there was either over or under reporting, which equaled to a net of 137 dollars. The error was found out and corrected in June, but what happened was is there was a student that, um, we had 50% of and a school that we, provide food services to had 50% and there were a couple of months where the same student was counted twice, um, but corrective actions were taken at the end of last fiscal year. Our second finding was in our attendance accounting, that we now will be submitting, um, an adjustment to the state because we under-reported our elementary district by 4,000 dollars and our secondary by almost 85,000 dollars. This was due to data entry errors as well as we did receive approval from the CDE on a material, material decrease for some of our days we, uh, J 13 waiver. One of the things we are doing to remedy this is we are continuing to train our site staff. We do have a new person in the attendance role at the district level auditing this year. And we are just at making sure that we are setting up guidelines and procedures and double checks in hopes that, um, we don't see an error like this again. I'm sure, and then so moving on to measure E and C, our bonds, there were no findings for that. But, um, it's, the audits are quite a bit, quite lengthy. If you haven't had an opportunity in the audience to look at, um, the backup for our board meetings, our audit was 97 pages and our bond audit was 20 pages. So are there any questions on the 97 pages?
I have a question on the 19 or the 19 page ones.
Okay.
Are we ready for those?
Yeah.
So I want to, um, do you have an estimate on when we're going to run out and when we need to, yeah? Help us think.
All right.
Interpret this in terms of when we have lost capital.
Yes. So, um, I'm pulling up to give you the exact numbers, the bond update from last month. So we anticipate at the end of this fiscal year to have just under 4 million dollars, um, in our elementary and 20 million dollars in our secondary. And through the presentation and conversation last month, that will get us, the goal is we have now have an idea of how we're going to spend those remaining dollars. And we have started the process that most of those funds will be encumbered in next fiscal year. But they, they are all now accounted for. So we will likely be depending on the length of the project, um, we will run out of funds at the end of next fiscal year or halfway through the following if projects aren't done. So we are ending the near that we're, we're there.
Does that, you know, the 4 million at the elementary, 20 million at secondary that we are, is encumbered for next year? Does that include, um, possibility, you know, is part of the encumbrance a reserve for emergencies? Like blown gas lines or water lines, I think? No.
No. And one of the reasons why the end of last fiscal year, the balance was so high is we had two major projects, um, our Pen Grove project, which was supposed to be done in last fiscal year and unfortunately will not be done in this fiscal year. And our battery backup projects, um, which have now both of those have carried over, will carry over into a third year. So that's one of the really hard issues when you are, though our regular funds, our general fund, our food service, our developer fees, those all follow the governmental accounting procedures of you, you encumber, you spend, you close out. The bond is really a project-based structure. But our systems don't account for that because that is not how governmental funds are generally spent. So that's part of the reason why when you look at these reports, I mean, it looked like our bond was flushed with 72 million dollars. Yeah, so.
Why is Pen Grove taking so long?
So I, it's my understanding that, um, in the beginning, going through DSA, the process, there was a lot of back and forth, um, between the district, the architectures, the DSA approval. There were some things that the, sorry, DSA is the division of the state architect. Most of our capital asset projects have to be approved by the state before we can move forward with those projects. The, there is an ADA path that, um, the district was not in agreement. So there was a back and forth with that. And then there was a delay in starting the full project. It was scoped out originally as one project. We've now broken it up into three kind of chunks, um, was one of the things. And then the actual site work started so much later than anticipated that we, um, have hit the horrible rainy season, which has really is, are the current delays for the project.
Maddie, you had a question?
I did. So, um, this is kind of somewhat related to the contracts also, but I wanted to, so I looked over our last meeting because I, I couldn't remember what projects were encumbered, what we were about to do, what we finished and all of that. And so I kind of have that here. And, um, so we, so we have secondary bond projects that equal that 20 million dollars. And part of that were, was the 8 million dollars for the building wing at Casa Grande, which we all questioned at the last meeting. And then, and there were several other things that we weren't really quite sure about. And then there were the elementary bond, which also added up to the 3 million that we had left. So, and, um, I don't think there were any questions about any of those, but so then, but then there was the current projects. So I'm just kind of trying to figure out, and there's really a lot of money. And, and I'm just trying to figure out if we do all of these, then we won't have any money for the current projects.
So, um, one of the, yeah.
Is that right or not?
Well, one of the things from the last board meeting, what we determined and we are now moving forward with was, um, that the goal of the board was to not move forward with the new building wings at Casa and instead move forward with the turf, athletic fields, um, bleachers, all of that replacement. So that is one of the, one of the changes that we have made. Sorry, historic, okay, sorry. I'm trying to think this through. So, um, one of the, the struggles that we've had in this fiscal year is finding historical documentation from the implementation of the bond. What has been, what projects have been bonded, what have been capital, um, developer fees and things like that. So one of the things that my team is working on is it's called a bond allocation summary. I think I mentioned it last month. Um, we used it in my previous district where it's broken out, um, not, not by year, but by bond and by project and the anticipated costs. So what I did was, um, I took all, we have all of the feedback from the bond presentation and we are working on this updated spreadsheet. One of the, the hard pieces of this is that we are using, some of these numbers that we are using are four and five years old and escalation and inflation have really changed the cost of projects that now, um, we're finding that we're, we're re- going out, um, our coordinator, our capital facilities, project manager is working with, um, some of our architecture firms on trying to update some costs. So we have a better idea. But the, the projects that were presented as the current, those are moving forward. We have contracts and stuff like that. And then the, the projects that we had on those lists with Casa Grande being one of them, those will take up the remain, the remaining bond funds. And actually they are a little higher than our current bond, knowing that, um, we may have to make small cuts or we may use our developer fees. But I think by creating this summary allocation and our goal is to work backwards. So really when we have these conversations about our facilities, about the costs, what our future needs are, we have a historical document, um, and really to the public to showing them, these are how we spent the bond funds. Um, it kind of goes in line with what I think you were starting to talk about. If you want me to touch on that or if you want me to wait.
It's up to you.
Okay. Um, I do know that we're bringing forward on our consent is a contract for DTA. It was my understanding after the presentation at the last meeting, um, in order the, to really consider going out, if we are going to go out for a bond, that decision needs to be made to, by the board by July. And in order for you to really make that decision is that you really need to have an understanding of where are, what we have, how it's going to be spent, the cost, and really what are the long-term needs of our districts? We have many aging facilities. We have sites that are at capacity now. Um, and in order to do that, we really need, um, a facilities master plan. It, it's bigger than me and my team going out and making our best guess. So, um, a facilities master plan takes months. There is community involvement. There are public hearings and meetings. And the one thing that I heard loud and clear was that we, we needed more information for July. So I reached out to a couple of firms and so this, what, what they were able to offer is a phased approach where we can do initial consultation, um, facilities walks and really look at the needs at each individual site and get kind of a, this is where we're going to be. This is the funds that, this is what you need to maintain your sites by July. So I can present to you, um, why, if we, if the, we decide as cabinet and district administration that we really do need to consider a bond. This is the why and this is how we got there, knowing that we then from July all the way to the November election, actually through December, um, because you don't need the facility, the actual finished plan until you sell the bond and you start spending it. But then really, what does that look like? So it's a really phased approach. Regardless of going out for another bond, um, or not, a facilities master plan is extremely important for a district to have, especially with the aging facilities. We also have, um, 17 acres of land that comes up in conversations here and there. And really what this does is gives us kind of a roadmap of where we need to spend our funds. And I think a lot of times we're often talking about bonds, especially right now, we've been discussing all the voters and the measures. But our facilities include our bond funds, our developer fees, our deferred maintenance, our routine restricted maintenance and our general fund dollars. So it really is, um, how we can best meet the needs, our facility needs, um, through a thoughtful process. And really, one of the things that is accounted for is historical trends in, um, inflation and escalation on what future costs will be. So out of a master plan, it may say, I'm just making this up, but McKinley Elementary School will need a new NPR in 10 years from now. Today's cost is this, but this will be the cost of replacement in 10 years from now. So even if we decide to not go out for a bond this November, we could look at this plan and say, okay, we can buy a couple more years. Maybe we go out at this year, but it will also show us if you choose to not spend the money now, this is how much it will cost to fix this in years out. So that's really, I, I do feel like we grouped this facilities master plan. We were talking quick. There was a lot going on, workforce housing measures and all of these things that the, the master plan itself kind of got lost in the shuffle of the importance. Also with the state going with their, the possibility of a state facilities bond on the ballot for matching funds. We also have to have a facilities master plan, um, to be able to apply for these matching funds. We also have to have the, the matching piece of the funds, but this is really in anticipation to set the district up for the best possible outcome, um, regardless of, or whatever decisions are made.
So, thank you. You know, I, um, I really was, um, struggling with the, with that contract for two reasons. And one was the fact that they specifically said in, in the contract that usually they, they do this, um, planning with a facilities master plan and that they're going forward without one. So, but if we look at this as the facilities master plan as, as reframing this, I don't know whether you have to change the contract to do that, but, um, so that we're looking at it in that way. Because my other reservation is that because measure B did not pass, I want to have a discussion about whether we put up a bond or whether we put the parcel tax back. And I mean, for, um, for November. And, you know, we can't have both. Um, and so I guess I, I was going to ask for a postponement of the approval of the contract until we've had the discussion and then have the facilities master plan. But now I don't, I don't think we need to do that. But does that make sense to you that, I mean, this is just, you know, I don't, I don't want this to become the preliminary for a bond that we may not put forward.
To speak to the, the language in the contract, um, like I said, DTA is a very reputable firm that I've had the opportunity to work, um, previously, and, um, this is out of the norm. We, when I, I called the day after the board meeting and I said, can, I need a facilities master plan. Great win. And I said, July. And he said, absolutely not. And I said, I need help. So this is really how to, and this was really to show the scope of work. And this was not, um, 10 firms out of 20 might've said, okay, and given us boilerplate, pre-done facilities master plan. So that's really where that language came from is I, I call, I upset the apple cart. Yes. And, and this was like, this is, this is not normal. It's, it, it, it is not common for a school district to not have, um, a current facilities master plan. master plan. And by current, I mean even 10 years old, that is updated every few years. So it, we're really working, we're working backwards on this planning piece. But I do understand how after the conversation, the way it was written, but that was really in true, like this is not, this is not typical, but they understood that the board is going to be making a very large, a huge decision likely in June or July. And this was really the way to give you as much information as possible in a very short amount of time.
I really appreciate that. I appreciate what you've done and the work that you've been putting into this and you've put my mind at ease. Thank you.
Any other questions about the audits? All right. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you all. Now we're going to move on to comments from the public on non-agendized items as well as special recognitions, reports and presentations. I have four public comment cards. If you'd like to make a comment about something not on the agenda, please run a card up to our wonderful Bree. And I'm going to quickly read as quickly as possible our really long statement. Under government code, section 54954, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Topic, should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted and written to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period. That part is right now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. Commenters may not cede their time to others. And since I have four cards and they're all on different topics, everyone gets their full three minutes. So Deb, you're up first.
Hello, everyone. My name is Deb Fox. I'm with the Cool Pedaluma Program, which is a community-based climate action program. I'm here to give you a preview of our upcoming transportation mode shift campaign, basically helping people get out of their cars and start trying biking, walking and busing to their destinations. With 67% of Pedaluma's activity-based or direct emissions, basically what you and I can actively take responsibility for doing in every decision, every single day is how we choose to get around town. And it, so what we're doing is basically helping to raise awareness, promote behavior change and build momentum towards a more sustainable and active transportation system in Pedaluma. And all of this is aligned with the goals of our city's blueprint for carbon neutrality, specifically to the transportation and land use action plan. So we are working with the city and the Safe Roots to School Task Force that we have here in town, Sonoma County Bike Coalition, various bike advocacy groups and the city's transit department to coordinate active transportation, again biking, walking and then public transportation, which is buses. And basically creating a funnel of activities to build momentum. With the first one being the most important one for you all is Wednesday, May 8th is Bike to School Day. And we have currently, there are four, possibly up to five schools leaving from Wickersham Park on bike trains, riding to school. Bike to Work Day is May 16th. We have a First Friday program happening all summer, Saturday rides, teaching people to ride to Aaron's Nature and to breakfast. We have our own community resource fair where people, we connect the, the community to resources on how to prepare for their emergencies, learn how to reduce their consumption, reduce energy and water conservation. And then we have city events like the summer Fourth of July Star Stripes Dogs and Bikes on Fourth of July and many other fun events that will be happening that again will also include busing. And this is where you all come in. I am going around to all the boards and commissions around at the city to invite you all to come out and get on a bike with us to support the schools. You become basically a bumper on a bike train. We have bike leaders and, or engineers and caboosees and bumpers to get our kids like Live Oak. Like Live Oak did a pie day, bike ride across town. They rode all the way from Mountain View and Webster. And we stopped by City Hall and picked up Peggy, the city manager, and we had the mayor with us and we rode across the D Street Bridge all the way to Live Oak and they got a homemade pie raffle. So that's the type of momentum that we're working on building. And the most important thing that we're here is the enthusiasm of the kids. They crave, they want their parents to do it more. So we, you'll be getting an email sent to you to please join us and I'll have different routes available that you can choose. We mostly have a west side at this point, schools participating. We, I, I don't actually have any bike trains that we know of. The Safe Roots to School Director does not know of any west or east side trains just yet, but that's why this is just the first of many that we'll be doing over, well, until 2030, until we can lower our carbon footprint. So anyways, thank you very much for the opportunity and you'll be getting an email from me.
Can you give us the time, location, just the logistics, one, one more, one more time?
Yes. May, it's Wednesday, May 8th is walk and roll. The trains tend to leave Wickersham, 7:45. There'll be a rally at, that one of the parents is coordinating with schools, trains going to McNear, Grant, Live Oak, trying to get McKinley in there because we can split off and go to McKinley. And then there may be some Pedaluma Junior High students participating as well. But the key thing, piece in all of this is that we need parents, at least on these coordinated rides. Valley Vista does not currently have a, a train. Pedaluma Junior High, they, they don't have an actual, we're helping coordinate the actual trains so that we're putting support. So we have for Live Oak, we have a kindergarten or every Thursday, we've been riding with, we support with block leaders to help make those bumpers. So it depends on the school. The school has to sign up. And so, and then you have to have a bike advocate, which the only way you create bike advocates is to get people out on their bikes. So. All right. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Next up, we have Celia Mayo.
Hi. I'm a little nervous. So I'm here to address Facilitron and the recent rate hikes for our after-school enrichment programs. I'm currently teaching after-school enrichment at McNear. My rates have gone from under a hundred dollars to almost $600 to, to use classrooms. And our, our after-school program, enrichment programs, our ASE programs are extensions of the school day. And they're here for, we, we provide them for our own Pedaluma City School children, our own students. It keeps the students engaged and connected to our schools and it is just that it's during after-school hours. It supports varied interests, giving the children opportunities to explore the world outside of technology, outside of the classroom and promoting whole child learning. Personally, the cost as it stands now is prohibitive and we didn't know this was going to happen. We had no idea this, this is how it was going to be. So as it stands now, for me, it's prohibitive to continue after this time. My classes always have, almost always have waiting lists. So I, I provide something to the children that they can't get in, in a classroom anymore in these days, especially because of all the technology where I'm kind of down to earth. An example is I teach adventures in nature to TK and kindergarten kids. And we had last time, there was an autistic child in, in my class and his, he had a, he had a support person with him, but he was the quintessential Salamander finder. And he became the, he became beloved through this program and made friends through this program that he would not have had in his classroom before that. Things like that happen in after-school enrichment programs. And because we're sponsored by the PTA, where we want to look at how to readjust the rate, the rate scales. We understand if it was an outside organization with outside community members, that the fees could be, you know, would be different. But that's not the case with after-school enrichment. It's through the schools, PTAs, and they set it up for the children to experience learning and intellectual development in ways that are not offered anymore in a classroom environment. Personally, my classes speak to a child's creative process, whether we're learning about apparition by painting with water from the tops of carrots and turnips as well as tasting turnips.
You have 15 seconds, Celia.
Okay. So I voted for many of you to be on the school board and because I believe that you would do what's right by our, by our children. And I hope that you've gained some understanding and insights to correct the situation as it is and that you will help to rectify it. I'm happy to be part of that process. And finally, in closing, I, I am curious, I have, I am curious about how much of our rate increases are actually going to Facilitron and not to our facilities. I would appreciate transparency in this regard. And I just want to say, let's open this up. Let's continue this conversation. Let this be the beginning of a conversation to fix this and thank you all for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Am I allowed to leave now? No.
Next up, we have Peter.
Good evening, everybody. Peter Costas, SCOT for STE. And I just, you know, wanted to share a few things with you. One is I always love coming here. I mean, the energy, the energy at the beginning of the board meetings with, this room is always packed. You honor your students, but you also honor the students' parents. I just think that's really heartwarming. And I just want to share a couple of things with you. I was very fortunate a couple of weeks ago to go to the National School Boards Association Conference in New Orleans. And just some takeaways about that. One workshop I went to, Toronto City Schools, they, they're part of it. They presented, they had a big issue with hate crimes in their schools. So what their board did was they mandated in our high schools that black studies and of course in the Holocaust be taught. So this started five years ago. So by instituting those mandated studies, they've dropped their hate crime rate from the high level to basically nothing anymore. It was just amazing just by, through education, you know, doing that. Another wonderful thing that happened was one of the keynote speakers was Ruby Bridges. So amazing. She, she was, you know, six years old and she integrated an all-white school in Mississippi and she put on the, on the screen, the Norman Rockwell painting of her, you know, six-year-old girl being walked by four guys in suits and into the classroom. So she talked about that experience, but then she started talking about race and racial issues and, you know, kind of the climate in the country. And she, she was riveted, you know, everybody was riveted listening to her. And she said, you know, it's not about black versus white. It's not about black versus brown. It's not about yellow versus, you know, white. It's about evil. And she says, it's all about evil. And what evil does is evil wants to open the door a little bit and evil wants to implant these thoughts in your head and then people will go about doing evil's work. You know, and she said, my son was shot by a black man. So it wasn't about black, 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 white. It was about, it's about evil. Just powerful speech. And then the next keynote speaker, the next day was Timothy Schreiber, the, the son of Yuni Schreiber and Sergeant Schreiber. He's now the head of the Special Olympics. And, you know, the whole theme of this thing was, you know, diversity, equity and inclusion. And he started talking about dignity and how we've lost dignity in this country and how we, we have contempt. And contempt is what's driving the media and contempt is what's driving politicians.
About 30 seconds, Peter.
And I'm, I'm done. Okay. How many seconds you said?
30.
Oh, three. Oh, 30. Oh, good, good. Anyway, so he came up with this dignity index. At the bottom of dignity index is they're not even humans. It's our moral duty to destroy them before they destroy us. And the top of the index is each one of us is born with inherent worth. So we treat everyone with dignity no matter what. So his whole thing is he goes to school districts, he goes around the country and he tries to talk to people about how they talk and to talk about dignity. Because when you have contempt, you're not going to listen to each other and you're not going to get anything done. And really quickly, tomorrow SCOT is honoring, honoring the classified employees in the county. So thank you all for your work.
Awesome. Thank you, Peter. We love having Peter come visit us. Now I wish I had gone, especially because I was in New Orleans for the National School Board. Next up, we have Vicky Parks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Vicky Parks. I'm one of your elementary music teachers. And I had heard that the idea of dedicated performing arts portables was presented last time. And I just wanted to come to encourage you to think about that and give you some reasons why. So the high school and elementary music programs in this district are at risk right now. During COVID, the elementary, junior high and high school music programs were minimized. There was no elementary band for two years. That means there were no band students feeding into the junior high or successively into the high school music programs, especially band. Students signing up for junior high and high school band are currently at a critical low, more than half of what they were before COVID. Following that, we hired three new music, elementary music teachers. Only two of them stayed. No, actually only one of them stayed. This year, we started with two more new teachers and they are very far, hard to find. We basically hired, just about hired everyone that applied. I mean, yeah. And they were in internship programs. They're not getting credentialed, experienced music teachers in this district. One of those that we hired this year already is gone from the middle of the year and we just now hired a fourth team member. This kind of turnover is happening because of the difficult conditions in our district for elementary music. It's also happening in other places, but especially here. We have seen people that applied and gone elsewhere that had better conditions or people have left to go for better conditions. And there are very few, they're hard to find, like all across the board with all kinds of teachers right now. So of course, the ideal teaching situation would be a very large music classroom with cabinets and shelves filled with instruments at the ready, plenty of space for students to do movement, folk dances, creative dance, music games. And the teachers know all the kids because that's one of their home schools where they teach all the grades from kindergarten through sixth grade. Instead, we grab instruments from a shared cabinet to roll around on a cart. We sometimes have a space, we sometimes have a space where we can teach for the entire day, but often we have to change classrooms more than once a day or change schools. And our least favorite is when we have to teach in somebody's actual classroom where there's not enough space for active games and we have no autonomy.
You have about 30 seconds, Vicky.
Oh, really? Okay. So maybe I'll skip to the end and see what I have left time for. So these are conditions what make it, make it difficult to attract and keep good music teachers in our district. And having more spaces would be a huge improvement for that so that we would have a place to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up, we have Erin.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to let you all know the art show is next Wednesday, May 1st, 4:30 to 7:30. I keep changing that. Thank you. I'll stay till 7:30. We'll be cleaning up. But I want to remind everybody that it's at Lucazi Center and they are under construction. So it's one night only. So if you want to see it, you'll need to come on that evening. We'll have the art show greatly reduced to a smaller amount of art. A digital show will still happen so you can review. A digital show will still happen, so you can review that on your own later. And then we'll still have performances from the jazz bands and hopefully Legally Blonde is all set up to come out and do a little couple of numbers, right? And we've worked on also Casa Grande being there, again, doing food, food trucks outside, similar to what you've already seen, but, but redone because it's a one-night-only. So just want to make sure you knew that if you wanted to go. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin.
And thank you, Erin, for all of your hard work on this.
All right, as promised, I'm going to adjourn us for a five-minute break. We convene our meeting at 8:56. And the night is just getting started. Thanks for bearing with us. Let's see, what is up next? Adoption and approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I second.
Any comments or questions?
Just real quick, so we have inadvertently two items that are the same. One, 11.4.1, approval of elementary schools comprehensive school safety plans. And then it's also an action item under...
Okay, can someone move to amend to either take it off the consent agenda or off the action items?
Eliminate it from the consent agenda.
I move to eliminate 11.4.1, approval of elementary schools comprehensive safety plans from the consent agenda.
I second.
I second.
All right, can I have a new motion to approve as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
All in favor of approving the amended agenda? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the amended agenda carries. So now I will report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Please bear with us because it has been a month since we met and we don't really have a spring break. Board trustees attended the astronomy club at Petaluma High, tours of the building trades facility, the Blue Zones kickoff, PEF Scholarship Awards, the Safe Routes to Schools Task Force, the Professional Development Committee, the Equity Committee, the Earth Day Student Panel hosted by PCS Climate Action Committee and CAPS, the Continuous Improvement Committee, CASA's American Government Class, a Petaluma River Park Stakeholder Meeting, the CASA musical Legally Blonde, the CASA Esports State Playoffs, a meeting with Global Glimpse about student, student travel opportunities, a CASA Track Meet, the Locean Youth Perspective Event, Kinnellworth Junior High Site Visit, the LCAP Meeting, an Arts Committee Meeting, a Student Board Member Handbook Discussion, and the Butter and Egg Days Parade. And that's just what the adults did. Student board members attended the Locean Youth Perspective Panel and that student board member was on the panel, which was awesome. The BIPOC Club, PEF Scholarship Night, Press Democrats Celebrate Community Youth Service Awards Night, and various baseball games. You can guess which one went to the baseball games, except now he's not here, but he was in, he was in his uniform. Does anyone have anything they want to add or share about their activities in the past month? Go ahead.
It's a bummer Jaden left, I just wanted to second what you said about him on the Locean Youth Perspective. He just showed a lot of courage and added a lot to the conversation.
Yeah, and there were five student panelists and three of them were actually PCS students, which was really great to see.
Yeah, I wanted to highlight that Casa Grande's esports team in the first statewide playoff tournament out of 180 teams in the state of California, Casa Grande finished number 16 in the state, or in the top 16, I should say. They made it through to the third round of the playoffs before getting knocked out by some other school, I don't remember which. But they're an amazing team and Petaluma had a good team as well this year.
All right, moving on to comments from the public on consent items. If you have a comment on anything on number 11, please run that up to Bree. But seeing no one jostling the stage, I'm going to move on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, hearing none, comments from the public on action items. Same thing, if you want to speak on an action item, please come bring us a public comment card. I see no cards, no frantic public. So we'll move on to action items. And the first action item is under Admin and Human Resources, Approval of Resolution 2324-37, Honoring the Contributions of Teachers to Quality Education and Declaring the Week of May 6th through 10th as Week of the Teacher. Who, Maddie, can you read that one into the record? Yes, there are many resolutions this time. Lots going on.
I didn't do the teacher.
I can.
All right, resolution of the Board of Education of Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union School Districts honoring the contribution of teachers to quality education and declaring the week of May 6th through 10th, 2024, as the week of the teacher. Whereas California Ed Code Section 37222 sets aside the second Wednesday in May as the day of the teacher and encourages suitable commemorative exercises directing attention to teachers and the teaching profession. And whereas the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts has the utmost respect and admiration for Petaluma's professional teachers who have dedicated their lives and their talents to the education of our students, who are truly our most precious and important resource. And whereas the Board of Education recognizes the vital role, truly vital role of teachers in realizing the vision of the California State Board of Education for California Public Education. All California students of the 21st century will attain the highest levels of academic knowledge, applied learning, and performance skills to ensure fulfilling personal lives and careers and contribute to civic and economic progress in our diverse and changing democratic society. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts hereby proclaims the week of May 6th through 10th, 2024, the week of the teacher, extending its sincere appreciation to the teachers in the districts who make our public schools successful.
And we, I would just say, add that we have, we truly do have some of the best and brightest teachers. And really, we love our teachers and appreciate everything that they do here for, for our students and for our community.
Do I hear a motion?
I move... No, go ahead. I don't have it before me.
I move to approve Resolution 2324-37.
I second.
Any other comments or questions? A week isn't enough, but we can start there and...
And I think, I mean, this covers, this covers teachers, our counselors, our school counselors, our, you know, school nurses, all our certificated staff.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries, the resolution passes unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2324-38, honoring the contributions of classified school employees to quality education and declaring the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as Classified School Employees Week. Does anyone want to read this one into the record? Joanna, could you read this one? Cool, thank you.
Whereas classified school employees, is this the right one? Okay, there's so many. Provide valuable services to the schools and students of the Petaluma School Districts. And whereas classified school employees contribute to the establishment and promotion of a positive instructional environment. And whereas classified school employees employed by the Petaluma School Districts strive for excellence in all areas relative to the educational community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Petaluma School Districts hereby recognize and wish to honor the contribution of the classified school employees to quality education in the state of California and in the Petaluma School Districts and declare the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as Classified School Employees Week in the Petaluma School Districts.
I would just add, in a similar way, we love our classified staff. We have some of the best and brightest classified staff. As a former principal and now a superintendent, our district, our school sites in our district does not run without the backbone of our district's or our classified staff.
Yep, absolutely. And again, a week isn't enough, but we'll start there. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2324-38. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the resolution passes unanimously. Moving on to the tentative agreement and public disclosure between Petaluma City Schools and CSCA Petaluma Chapter 212.
Tonight, we bring forward the tentative agreement in AB 1200, Public Disclosure. For your review and approval, we met and negotiated with CSCA and settled on a 10% salary increase retroactive to, back to July 1. I would like to note that 9.5% was included in the second interim budget. So you will see the difference of the point, half of a percentage in the AB 1200. Any questions?
I move to approve the tentative agreement.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we have approved the tentative agreement and public disclosure. All right. Now, moving on to Resolution 2324-33, declaring the month of April as Arab-American Heritage Month. I can read this one. If I can open it, then I will. Whereas April is Arab-American Heritage Month, established by the United States Congress to recognize more than 3.5 million Arab-Americans across the United States who have helped move our nation forward, embodying the truth that diversity has been and will always be our country's greatest strength. And whereas people with Arab heritage were among the many immigrants who came to our country's shores with a range of cultures, customs, backgrounds, and beliefs and have contributed significantly in the United States history through their contributions in sciences, arts, government, and commerce. And whereas Arab-Americans have contributed to every aspect of American society and are recognized for achievements in education, social services, public safety, health, business, fine arts, entertainment, science, politics, law, engineering, technology, and more. And whereas Arab-Americans continue to be the victims of bias and discrimination, including harassment, hate crimes, racist rhetoric, and violent attacks. And whereas core values in the governance of Petaluma City Schools include the beliefs that all students reach high levels of achievement through rigorous and culturally relevant curriculum, and diversity is an asset that strengthens and enriches our learning community. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student needs the opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts Board of Education does hereby recognize April as Arab-American Heritage Month. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2324-33.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the resolution passes unanimously. And moving on to May, we have two heritage months. So starting with approval of Resolution 2324-34, declaring the month of May as Jewish-American Heritage Month. And I'll ask Trustee Webster to read this one into the record.
Whereas between 1995 and 2006, Presidents Clinton and Bush made proclamations that May would include Jewish-American Heritage Weeks. And on April 20th, 2006, President George Bush, W. Bush, issued the first presidential proclamation which designated May 2006 as Jewish-American Heritage Month. And whereas May is Jewish-American Heritage Month, established by the United States Congress to recognize centuries of Jewish contributions to American culture. And whereas Jewish-Americans, in the face of unspeakable discrimination and adversity, have fought tirelessly to realize the promise of the nation's freedom and continue to teach us empathy and compassion. And whereas Jewish-Americans have helped bring about enduring progress in every aspect of society, shaping our country's character and embodying the values we hold dear while continuing to confront hostility and bigotry. And whereas Jewish-Americans have contributed to every aspect of American society and are recognized for achievements in education, social services, public safety, health, business, fine arts, entertainment, science, politics, law, engineering, technology, and more. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts Board of Education does hereby recognize the month of May as Jewish-American Heritage Month and encourage all Petaluma families, students, and staff to investigate and celebrate the contributions of Jewish people to the community of Petaluma, the state of California, and the United States.
I move to approve the resolution.
I second.
I heard Trustee Pawn first, for our note taker, no, just for the note taking. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, Resolution 2324-34 passes unanimously. And we'll move on to approval of Resolution 2324-35, declaring the month of May as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I'll ask Trustee Jen. Yeah.
Whereas the United States designates May as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the contributions and generations of AAPI people to this country's history, society, and culture. And whereas the month of May was selected for AAPI Heritage Month because the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States in May of 1843, and the first transcontinental railroad was completed in May of 1869 with substantial contributions from Chinese immigrants. And whereas the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community is an inherently diverse population composed of more than 45 distinct ethnicities and more than 100 language dialects. And whereas despite hardships and barriers, the people of Asia and Pacific Islands, who have come to this country and their descendants have made substantial contributions to California's development in every way. And whereas, according to the California Department of Education data, at least 3.3% of students in Petaluma City Schools, 1.6% of its classified staff, and 2.4% of its certified, I think it's certificated staff, identified as AAPI. And they contribute to the cultural mosaic that is the strength of the school district and community. And whereas core values in the governance of Petaluma City Schools include the beliefs that all students reach high levels of achievement through rigorous and culturally relevant curriculum, and diversity is an asset that strengthens and enriches our learning community. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student needs the opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts Board of Education does hereby recognize May as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and encourage all Petaluma families, students, and staff to investigate and celebrate the contributions of AAPI people to the community of Petaluma, the state of California, and the United States.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2324-35.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, approval of Resolution 2324-35 passes unanimously. Thank you all, for everybody who worked on all of the heritage month ones and the uh, district week honoring ones. I can't think of a better way to say that. Um, and especially thank you to Bree Weaver, our amazing administrative genius who made it all possible. Now we'll move on to approval of the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators in the Elementary School District for 2425.
I move to approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators in the Petaluma Union.
Elementary.
Oh, elementary.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, what should we know about this one?
This is an annual item that is approved by the board and sent to the Commission on Teacher credentialing, um, for us to employ people outside of, um, subject matters.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. That one, that declaration of need is approved for the Elementary School District. Moving on to approval of Declaration of Need for the High School District. Can I hear a motion?
I so move to approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators in Petaluma Joint Union High School District.
Second.
All right, same thing.
Yes, and I should say not fully credentialed, not outside of subject matter. I apologize.
No, it's okay. It's been a long, long time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we approve that declaration of need. So now we'll move on to approval of Resolution 2324-39 on final action on resolution and decision not to reemploy certificated employees for the 2425 school year. Can I hear a motion first?
I'm going to approve, uh, 2324-39.
Still need a second.
I second.
All right, now we can talk about it. I know Jason's not here, so Matthew or Amanda, who's talking?
Okay. Tonight, we bring forward Resolution 2324-39, um, on the final action on the resolution and decision to not reemploy certificated employees for the 2425 school years. These are the three certified positions that were part of the initial layoff process.
Any comments or questions? All in favor of approving the resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The resolution passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the variable term waiver request for a dual immersion language teacher employment of Arati Tejada Mendivil to teach Spanish at McDowell Elementary based on the issuance of the variable term waiver. Uh, can I get a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay. What do we need to know that's not in the title?
I can just address this. It's, um, these are, the next two items are our visiting teacher program from Spain. Our two teachers who are visiting us from Spain. And there is just requiring additional time to complete all of the, the CBAS, CTELL, all the exams required to teach in California. They are both wonderful teachers, and we're very fortunate to have them here. And so this is essentially a variable term waiver to allow them to continue teaching in the DLA program for the next, the next two items are the same for two different people. And they need to be action items for the, um, for the, um, for these to, these to go through the county.
So these are the two teachers that have been teaching this year?
They've been teaching all year.
So how, do we have to do this every year for them?
Yeah, until they're fully credentialed.
Okay.
In California, they have their credential in Spain, but yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That approval passes unanimously. Move on to the same approval for Maria Yolanda Esteban Lorente. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
A second.
Any questions or comments? All right, um, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that approval also passes unanimously. And now moving on to Business Services, approval of the 2023-2024 Classified Salary Schedules. Can I hear a motion?
I second.
All right, so this is making that tentative agreement happen.
Yes, this is a CSCA salary schedule retroactive to July 1.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions? Yeah, we gotta get it over the finish line, y'all. No, I wasn't talking to y'all, I was like, we gotta, we gotta do this. Otherwise, it's just ratifying the contract. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the salary schedule is approooove. Awesome. And that was all of our action items. So now comments from the public. No, it's not, oh, student, never mind, yeah. I thought that we had, yep. I just don't want Esmeralda to talk, that's the, that's the thing. No, um, yes, we do. So can someone move to approve the Elementary Schools Comprehensive School Safety Plans?
I move to approve the Elementary Schools Comprehensive Safe, School Safety Plans.
I second.
All right, uh, Esmeralda, can you tell us about the school safety plans?
Yes, so, and this, this is us bringing the safety plans on an annual basis. So this addresses all of the relevant ed code and disaster plans, as well as an additional climate and culture plan. And so we have our elementary principals actually on Zoom. So if there are any questions related to a specific site's, um, safety plan, now would be the time to pose a question. But we are, um, proud of the safety plans in that we've done a lot of work with North Bay, uh, security consultants and, and working with training our staff at each school site. And our, uh, school leaders have done a tremendous job, uh, working those plans and practicing all of those different scenarios on their campuses and, and adding that additional climate and culture piece that you see. We also, also know that there are, um, these are redacted plans, there are specific, um, very site-specific, uh, measures that we're putting in place that have very personal identifiable information that we don't want public facing, but I have the, the copies of all the comprehensive plans without the reductions in my office if you ever want to see those specific parts.
Yeah, I think we had that question in the past, because if we're telling people how we're gonna react to a school shooting or a bomb threat, that's not always the best. We don't need to help them. Um, does anyone have any questions?
I just, I mean, you just mentioned it, I just really appreciated you adding that, or everyone who's watching, adding the culture and climate goals.
Yes.
That was really cool to see, yeah. To think beyond like physical, but think about psychological safety as well, so.
Related but not on these safety plans, Esmeralda, when should we expect these for the secondaries?
The secondary plans will come on May 14th.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, principals, for staying until neither, oh, Gaddy might have a question for you.
I just have a really quick question that just occurred to me, thinking about some of the, um, things that have been happening on the secondary sites. Um, I, I know that I was at CASA when they were doing a practice, and it was, uh, all, everybody to the foot, to the field. And, um, I was just wondering if at some point we get, uh, you know, an analysis if they're doing a drill and how it kind of feeds into their safety plans. Does that make sense?
So sort of like, uh, the, the result of those drills?
Yeah, yeah. And then how, you know, because they were gonna have like a, a big meeting the next day and go over what happened and, um, and I was just wondering if that ever comes to us or has some relationship to those safety plans? Because you put in a safety plan and it doesn't happen, but do we know that? And how is that used? I guess, how is a safety plan used and how does it, uh, get changed over time?
That's a great question, and that's part of the after-drill review that Bill is doing with the sites and actually providing them with notes. So when they do their big disaster drills, they are doing, he's doing a review and kind of looking at how it was enacted, providing feedback to the site administrators. And that goes into how they then alter some of those plans and then into the training for the following year. So there's definitely that, that feedback loop, um, that, that Bill is helping us with as well.
As well, as well as best practice. I think when you mentioned, you know, where should, where should a, a site like Casa Grande evacuate to, is it multiple sites as one site? This is why we've contracted with North Bay Security to have an expert with us there literally while we're doing the drills to give that feedback and say, no, no, this is what you should do in this situation and practice multiple different kinds of drills. Um, I think that we've really amped, we've really ramped up what, how we practice these drills, because we know that the more we practice them, it becomes second nature as opposed to, um, when you're in, when you're faced with that emergency, that crisis situation, you fall back on your training. And that's, so that's, um, I think that's been an important part of what we've been really working on strengthening this, this, this year.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call a vote on approval of the safety plans. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the school safety plans pass unanimously. And now we can move on to comments from the public on discussion or information items. I don't see any cards, I don't see anyone rushing the stage, so we will move on to those discussion items, starting with 15.1.1, our friend, the Williams Settlement Quarterly Uniform Complaint Report. Yeah.
Nothing to report for the, for those two items.
We love to hear it. Great, and then an update on mental health supports.
So I think this is, this is a tricky one, because I think in, in, uh, when we look at the Budget Advisory Committee, I don't want to discount what was, you know, done with that Budget Advisory Committee. And also, we, the week, as I said before, the week before spring break was a very challenging week for many, many of us. And to think about our LMFTs, the reduction with our LMFTs is a very, um, it's a very difficult thing to be thinking about. So we've heard loud and clear from a lot of, um, teachers, staff, community members. And I also think that something that has changed between those times is we've, we've gone out for a, for two very large grants, uh, one for Casa Grande, one for Petaluma High School in particular. And we are pretty, we are, we are very, we are hopeful and pretty optimistic that we're gonna receive the grants. And as part of that grant would be for some, uh, um, the pathway support for mental health and things. And so part of what was written into the grant is to, to, um, to preserve the LMFT, that, so that position, mental health position. And so with that as a sort of a backdrop and a change, a shift from where we're, we're at, I have a hard, I, um, I think it was written here, given the unprecedented mental health crisis facing our schools, our students cannot, cannot afford to lose this support right now. And, um, so I'm just bringing this up as a discussion to let everyone know that's sort of where we're at. Does anyone want to add, Esmeralda, or?
I mean, I think we know that the mental health supports are paramount and our mental health team is, you know, they are responding in the moment to every dynamic situation that's faced at the sites. And so, um, I think we know that this is, this is a high priority, and so we want to maintain what we have, um, for as long as we can.
When do we hear back from the?
May.
Grant? Okay, and this is the state government? I forget who's give, who's managing the grant?
Tony, do you want to talk about that? It's the, um, CTE. Strong Workforce.
Yes, it's the, it's part of the, the Strong Workforce, uh, Tech Education.
Cool, strong workforce needs healthy minds. I'll take it.
These are 1.5 million dollar grants each for each school.
Wow.
So, well, we will, we will see.
That would be awesome.
Yeah. We, we know that, we know we have to make cuts, and this is why I, I hesitate to even bring this up, and I, I don't want to discount the Budget Advisory Committee, but I also think that, um, we are pretty opt, we are optimistic that we're gonna receive some of this money. And, um, and I want to, we want to, we know that we have amazing people in place, and so before we loot, we want to, we want to continue to, to, we want to continue to keep them. Our students need them. Our staff needs them.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that, that update. Look forward to hearing that. Moving on, sorry, does anyone else have any questions? I mean, moving on to Business Services, the facility naming policy. Amanda, tell us a little bit about what's the attachment?
All right, um, after the conversation at the last board meeting, it felt like our current board policy did, does not adequate, adequately, um, reference the goal of the board in the district. So I, um, did a little research, because we do currently have CSBA's recommended policy, and just looked at what other districts had, um, had an opportunity to talk to, to board members, um, about what these plans could look like. So, um, this is the plan in draft form that I came up with. Hopefully, everybody had a moment to read it, but if they, you could, can I? Yep, perfect. Up a little bit more, um, or down a little? So the or, so, um, one of the things is, um, there is an or in this that, um, so for, on the, when naming a facility or portions of a facility, the following criteria should be considered. One, the proposed name should be appropriate. Two, the name should stand the test of time. Three, in naming sites or facilities, special consideration may be given to those names that will have some special meaning to the students and Petaluma community. And then, um, we have options 4A and 4B. So 4A reads, in general, buildings will not be named after persons. Still, if the name involves a person, there should be evidence of distinguished service, special school contributions, fiscal or service, or other honors earned that reflect well upon the education received in the school district. Or B, 4B, only under rare and extraordinary circumstances should facility, property, academic, or athletic programs be named for an individual or entity without private philanthropism, sorry, support for honorary and/or service-based recognition. Um, and A, recognition of an individual who has served in a PCS academic or administrative capacity shall not be made, shall not be made until the individual has been retired or deceased at least two years. The recognition of an individual's service to the campus should honor a person who has achieved unique distinction in education or other significant areas of public service, or who has served the campus in an academic capacity and has earned a national or international reputation as a scholar, or who has made extraordinary contributions to a campus or PCS which warrants special recognition. Um, and then five is portions of school facilities such as libraries, gymnasiums, and athletic fields shall be named according to their educational purpose. However, if another name is used, it has no implied permanence and may later be removed by the board. The other piece that we discussed and considered is, um, maybe having it an exhibit, um, that would outline, um, donations and stuff like that, um, if that is the option, the way that the board would like to go. Thoughts?
Yeah, um, I, I like, uh, uh, option 4B better. I think it captures some of what is stated. One, I want to make a more broader comment that, um, I, I did some investigation of my own as well in the CSU and the policies that, uh, you know, you go to a CSU campus, there are buildings named after people, some, not all. And, uh, I, I talked with our advancement people who pointed me to And I talked with our advancement people who pointed me to Cal State Northridge is kind of has the model policy and it's very detailed. And it's generally, the, the gist of it is naming of buildings in particular, spaces is a philanthropic resource. And, and actually, I think that reflects what I was trying to express last time, that honestly, naming buildings after people, I don't find it particularly honorific, but it does attract philanthropic activity, which is why, you know, at universities, we use that. And there is this detailed schedule and it will, and it says, you know, 25 million will get you this. 10 million will get you that. No, I'm not, I'm not joking. Yeah, we got the Mashouf Center, we have the Nabari, you know, Coffee Center, whatever it is. But that does actually, and, and I think as a school district, we, we probably do want to leave that door open particularly for facilities in the future that are harder to fund with strictly public monies, you know, like a performing arts center or maybe a swim center or some athletic field, those kinds of things. So I want to leave that door open for philanthropic contributions. And as long, and we still get final, according in the CSU policies, you know, the, the site and the board still gets final say because we don't want a name that doesn't reflect the values of the thing. But my point on all this is it's used as a philanthropic tool. Honoring people for doing jobs ahead of, you know, what they're expected to do, go in other areas. You know, programs and type of things, it's not really things and places. So I like B for that reason. It doesn't eliminate the possibility that we could, that we name it after a person. But it does say it's rare and it's, I like the two-year limit because what that is, is an operationalization of the earlier, of four A says the test of time. If, if someone has retired or has died and two years later, we're still talking about that person, they probably have made an impact that is worthy of, of that.
You were talking about buildings, what about rooms or same idea? Space, okay.
In the, in the CSU policy, the things that don't require that kind of approval or philanthropic is, is a gift. Like, oh, a community member gives an art piece to the, to the institution to display as they please. Well, it's just a gift and they can call it that gift or a bench by the park or, you know, those kinds of things. Those typically require any kind of our approval and it's not a facility, you know, per se.
Yeah, I like B better as well. Yeah, and I think two years is fair and it's not that long, it's not like a decade. So, yeah.
And the second part of the policy sets guidelines for naming or renaming a building. I don't know if you had a chance to go over that or if there were any questions. But it, in the policy, it sets the committee, which is the superintendent and designee will forward, talks about the board report. But it, it will, the committee will consist of two members of the Board of Trustees, the superintendent or designee, one school administrator, two certificated staff members, one classified staff member, one school council member, two student representatives, and two community representatives.
Yeah, I thought that all sounded really good. I think the criteria all seemed good. Yeah.
I would encourage us to develop that appendix and, and put some price tags on it. Yeah, particularly if we, if we see that in our future for development.
All right, so we will bring this back next month with option four B and then work on an exhibit attached with pricing. I will do some research on there. We might not be able to get the going rate that the CUs get.
We can try.
And they, and they come with very clear guidelines, like you, you're given this gift, but you don't have control over it. It's a gift and, yeah.
Awesome, thank you. Moving on to Ed Services, we got an AR and then a bunch of new course proposals. So, yeah, new administrative regulations, second reading for placement in mathematics courses. So we talked about this last time, but Tony, do you want to refresh us because it's been a month?
Yeah, this, just to support the board policy that was under consent, to give specifics about the placement policies and ensure that there's no criteria that play, that students have opportunities to take high-level accelerated math without prerequisites or any other conditions.
Great, any questions or comments? All right, moving on to the first reading of do the new course proposal for introduction to creative writing.
Yes, so the creative writing and the film studies are actually complementary courses, really designed to go deep in analysis and storytelling and conventions and constructions of writing to help hopefully inspire kids to not only develop deeper literacy and, and, and love for storytelling, but provide an elective around, around the language arts and support that and, and hope kids develop that love for, for learning through the language arts as opposed to maybe some other elective options for them. And their semester courses that would complement each other.
Awesome, anyone have questions about creative writing or film studies?
Everyone's going to hate me.
No.
So I have reservations. I, I mean, of course, they're wonderful. They're both electives, they're not CTE, they're both semester-long. So it assumes that students are going to take both. If a student doesn't take both, they're stuck. There's not a lot of other semester classes. I mean, they sound wonderful, I love teaching creative writing, the kids love doing it. But for me, I feel like we're trying to build our CTE program. We're, and we're adding unrelated electives that would dilute that effort. This is just me looking at it. With declining enrollment, we need to build some exciting electives that are part of CTE pathways to energize and inspire our students' interests. And, you know, you can build creative writing into your regular curriculum. You can build film studies into your regular curriculum. So I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't probably mind it as standalone classes except for are we going to really do the CTE pathway and really go all in? Because there's not enough students for electives.
I would argue that.
It's not foreign language.
I would argue that it can be career, technical.
Or foreign language, he did not apply as CTE. We don't have, is this supposed to be visual and performing, a part of the visual and performance?
No.
The production is.
The production is, this is, this is just elective, G electives now.
G electives, exactly.
We could, yeah, we could go back and ask them to explore to see if it could be an intro to art, media arts. If it's talking about film and exploration of storytelling, it could potentially maybe align to one of the CTE doctors. That could be a recommendation before the second reading or moving it forward. If that's what you would like us to explore.
Yeah, I'd like it, I mean, that, if that's possible. I mean, do you, do you feel that we have enough student interest to be able to create that kind of pathway?
And I think that's a conversation I can have with them to probe a little deeper. This was submitted in a little later, so I think it was part of the course request. So they may have students already signed up, but I can check to see where, where they're currently at and, and see if we can make any kind of modifications.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would want to, sorry, go ahead Sheldon.
I'm sorry.
No, no, go, go.
I, I just want to understand the premise of Maddie because I don't recall, I mean, I understand we're building CTE pathways, but I don't recall that every course that we propose has to be on a pathway. I, I do recall the opposite, every CTE course has to be A through G. But this isn't that.
I think, I think what I'm, I guess what I'm concerned about is that we have a lot of electives already that are kind of unrelated. And so I, I'm trying to get my, you know, we have, we have drafting, we have, there's a, there's a, they're, they're in a pathway, let's say, but they're not in a CTE pathway. There's no capstone, there's no intro class. And so I don't know whether there's enough students to go around to, well, there's going to be a change in bell schedule. It was just my initial reaction to it was just how are we going to get both electives that are, you know, just kind of not attached to anything and also CTE electives and get enough kids for all of them with declining enrollment?
My, my issue is that I think, I don't think teachers are coming up with new courses if there hasn't been a demand for them. It takes a lot of energy and effort to develop a course, to submit it to the UCs, to get it A through G approved. And I, so my sense has been for all of these is that there's a need or there's a want. And so these teachers have developed these courses.
I would want to investigate that further because I would want to know if it was on the course request and what the demand was.
Right.
Because it is true, we are seeing especially, I mean, hoping next year, kids will be in full schedules. And then maybe that will help since we'll have all these electives. But a lot of why the bell schedule, well, part of the reason why we were told we couldn't move forward with the bell schedule is because it impacts the master schedule. But then if we're going to add this other class, won't that also impact the master schedule? And then, yeah, we don't even know if we're going to have like 32 kids for each section and the fall and the spring. I mean, I'm not opposed to the class itself, but I guess I just do want to make sure that there is the demand and that we are going to be able to fill it.
Oh, I agree, I fully agree.
Yeah, I would definitely be interested in making it part of a CTE pathway, even if not officially like this next year, in the following year. I mean, as someone whose stepkid is going to Art Quest, like I think there is a demand and I think we probably are losing students to the Marin School of the Arts and Art Quest in Santa Rosa. So I think there probably is a demand, I would be interested to see what it is. But I mean, one of my best friends at Berkeley went to Art Quest and did film studies at Berkeley and now is a writer for one of the Star Trek TV shows. So like there are careers in creative writing and film studies for sure.
Well, I found it very exciting that the production class is part of a VAPA CTE. Yay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good transition because none of these are action items, I think. Getting our, you got our feedback.
Production is a part of CTE pathway, the visual performing or the arts. And it really helps, I think, the, you know, understanding theater and stage production and, and all that kind of backend stuff with theater. So I think it, yeah.
Yeah, that looks great. Any other questions or comments on production? Hearing none, we'll go on to the first reading for a resolution about the bell schedule.
I really appreciate that there's a deadline written into that.
Yeah. Seconded and thirded, and probably fourth and fifth, but I don't want to speak for everybody. Any other questions or comments? So we'll see that one probably the next, the May meeting, okay. Perfect.
Everyone's good with that, coming back. Okay.
All right. Nothing under student services, so moving on to future business.
I thought that we were going to have an ethnic studies update. I mean, we did have a lot on the agenda, we would have been here till 10:30. So I understand, but I'm hoping that we'll get the update at the next meeting, especially because you know, neck, not next school year, but like a year from now, we're going to basically have to have it all in place because the 25, 26 school year. And so it'd be nice to at least have like, to be able to pilot it for a semester or two ahead of like it being fully required for students. So I understand if we can't pilot for the fall, but at least for the spring. Because we've been talking about this for like.
We've been talking about it since we got on the board.
Yeah, and then we had someone from SCO, he's not there anymore, but he came like three years ago to talk about it. And so I'm just wondering what is going on. Are we ready? Are we ready to semester?
There you go, sassy.
Yeah.
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 So definitely an ethnic studies update for future business sooner rather than later, please. And then any other future business requests?
Yeah, oh, just, oh, it's a question of whether or not we need this discussion on our bond options in light of the facilities' master planning schedule. I think what I heard from Amanda in the early discussion is if we were to go out for a bond in November, it would be based upon kind of this first phase of a master plan in July that wouldn't have the detail of identified projects, kind of more, more kind of categorical versus, well, I'm not even sure what the other option would be, would be, I guess, waiting till March with a very detailed list, I guess, would be the option, right?
And then it's too late to get it on the ballot, but yeah, for November, for November, but yeah.
No, yeah, that's right, that's right. I mean, we're encumbered, I mean, we have funds for next year that are encumbered and it's very tight. But I'm just thinking about what the options are because it, it sounds like what we're saying is if we go out in November, we have to convince the community to trust us with a kind of a categorical menu of things, which I'm, I'm not comfortable, we could, how much of an argument we'd have to do that. Or we can take a big risk, wait till March of next year with detailed outline, but then run the risk of running out of bond money next year.
So the, the, that, it's kind of more the bare bones by July. So the board can make the decision in order to go. But the, the plan itself will be, the meetings will happen.
Right.
And the, the plan itself by election time will come to, will be finished.
And we will be able to put it into the, oh, okay.
It just won't be in completion by, there's not enough time to have all the community meetings by then.
I misunderstood, thank you.
Sorry.
Not, not name the projects.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But the projects will be named by November.
Yes, and by and large.
And we'll need a dollar amount by the time we put it on the ballot, I would imagine.
Yes, so that will help us because we do have the bonding capacity. So what it will do, what a facilities' master plan also does is it, it prioritizes projects by site to make sure that there is like equal representation too. So there, when you create a facilities' master plan, it potentially could be $300 million worth of projects, knowing, say, we can only go out for 200. All 300 million projects are there in priority order by site. And also allowing for flexibility, but it really gives the, the clear information of, chances are we can't go for out for how much we actually need, but helps to prioritize.
And be transparent. Transparency to the community.
So one of the features, once you have a facilities' master plan, it does live on your website for public inspection at all times.
So we, we did two parcel taxes, one for hiding. When we do bonds, do we do, do bond, two bond things as well?
Yes, we'll do two bonds and the facilities' plans will, it'll be separated, but still one together. But it will be broken out by each bond. but it will be broken out by each bonding capacity.
So one for elementary, one for high.
And just on the November election, one of the, the big pushes for November is the state facilities bond will be on the ballot. And anytime a local bond, facilities bond is on the ballot, at the same time, it has a much higher approval pass rate.
It's local money.
Any other future business?
I went to a fabulous student panel yesterday for the climate action and caps. The path, the climate action pathways for schools, and it was with the interns from that program. And they were fabulous. They were from Petaluma High and CASA, and they were talking about climate action. They, they're doing an audit for, you know, our electrical use and waste. I mean, it was really well done. And so I was talking to Dan afterwards and we were, we were talking about updating the climate action resolution. And he said that there was a AB 285 was passed last October and it now requires our science curriculum in grades one through 12 to include an emphasis in the causes and effects of climate change. So it's now a state mandated local program that's of course not paid for, but it is there. So I thought that we could get a committee together to, to just update the, the resolution. And so I wanted to put that out of future business that we wanted. And anybody else that wants to write it.
Climate committee update?
It's a climate action resolution that we wrote a couple of years ago. Yeah, I have a copy somewhere.
Okay.
And just updated, there's a couple of things, other things we could put in there.
I just wanted to bring it back to San Antonio. So, you know, since we're going to be in CSI, CSI. I'm asking for regular updates, like bi-monthly. Is that what it is, every other month, like updates?
Bi-monthly means twice a month or every other month.
Okay, every other month, let's go there.
Baby, no one knows what to do with us.
Right. I mean, I would like an update every other month on the progress, on what they're finding with the root cause analysis. I just want like real-time data and information to make sure that we're actually moving the needle on, on, on the school side.
Yeah.
We just cannot allow the school to continue with these outcomes. So, so I'm asking for, starting in, I guess, August or September. And then also the student of the month, I mean, they have student of the semester. Can we like give them a little bit more love, like at least student of the quarter? Why can't they have, or student of the month?
Especially if they have the quarter system.
Yeah, why can't we do that? It's like they only get to come twice a year.
And it's only one student.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would like for us to change the format on that. I guess that's Amy.
More students, yeah.
Yeah, we, and we can, we can. I think we could also break down and look at, you know, population and size. So if you think about school at Casa Grande with, say, 1800, 1800 students, what percentage of the students are we bringing over the course of a year? And then the students like San Antonio, where you have a school of 80, 85 students, say, how many do we bring? What, what percentage of the students are we bringing in a school like Pax Cherry Valley's? Seven, eight as well, we do students of the semester. And so we can look at, kind of give you guys a breakdown of what, what is the percentage? Or do you just want to move forward and?
We can't over-celebrate these kids at San Antonio. Like, it's such a different situation.
So you want to do it quarterly?
I think quarterly would be good.
I mean, but I, I would, along those lines, I mean, in terms of ratios, I would be up for having more than, more at the comprehensive high schools. Right?
Yeah, what do you mean? How many more than two?
Yeah, yeah, something, yeah. And just to, I mean, to take a look at the ratios to see what is reasonable.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And their, their presentations are usually pretty short, their student of the month, at least the high schools.
The high schools keep it short.
Yeah.
San Antonio gives a school report just once a semester, right?
Yeah, maybe they could do reports quarterly as well instead of semesterly.
So let me, let me bring back, let me bring back the ratios and you, can we take a look at it next time and under discussion and give direction? Sounds good?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Any last future business ideas? If not, I am going to adjourn the meeting at 10:01 PM.